Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting, June 1st, 2015. We are now called to order. First matter of business is the approval of minutes. Does everyone have the copy of the May 11, 2015 minutes? Are there any? Okay.
Of the last meeting and to the person who made both the motion and seconded. We did go back and Pam went back and looked at the tapes, so I believe that it was really Liza who made the motion and Carol who, no, and Andy who seconded it.
Okay.
So we would make that change. It hasn't been made yet, but we will make that change. And we didn't receive any other comments.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as edited?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 11th. Will the edit and approve the minutes?
Do you have a second? Do you have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Thank you. Questions and comments?
We see no.
Okay. So, just for the people in the audience, if there's nothing on the agenda, if you have a question that's not on the agenda, this is the time we set aside. If anyone has a question, let us know. Otherwise, we're going to continue along. Okay? I don't hear any questions. Superintendent report.
Thank you. I have a number of things, but they were all brief because we have a long agenda and a lot of folks here for topics of interest. Full day kindergarten update. As of about 20 minutes ago, we now have 296 children registered for kindergarten. I got an email from a family moving into town with four children, so a kindergartner and three others. So 296, about what we thought we might have, however, about 50 students more than last year or the current year's kindergarten. We anticipated that that would likely happen because last year, the current year, still in kindergarten, students, a number of those in the half-day program, those parents had elected a private school placement and we expected more students, so we're at 296. We could be happier a bit about the numbers breaking well in the buildings. In other words, it would be nice if there were four sections, four sections in three buildings and three in another. That isn't the way it is broken, so we have two buildings where the numbers are below 20 and we have two buildings where they're a little bit above. And we're considering whether or not we need to have a 16th section, which would, of course, only be possible by eliminating another section of the 1 through 5 population. So that decision is being made in one school. But overall, a good number, a good-sized kindergarten, and we do believe as well that we've met our budget, that the budget was appropriate based upon our preliminary enrollment to cover the costs of that program. So that's good news. FY '16 budget update. You, of course, affirmed last week that we would be able to meet the budget. We affirm to you that we'd be able to meet the budget that was appropriated at the town meeting. However, in order to do that, we needed an additional $44,000 in personnel savings. We are still optimistic that we can get there, and if we don't, we will need to cut approximately .5 or .6 FTEs from the secondary program. But that 44 gap is now down to 31,000, so we're making good progress. So we are comfortable that we can live within the budget that was appropriated at town meeting. At the last meeting, I indicated that we had given some thought to trying to do some paperless meetings, electronic meetings, and tossed around a little bit the idea of assigning Chromebooks to the school committee for the summer to be able to do a little pilot of that notion. We'll see how it goes. The goal, of course, would be not to have to duplicate or double what we're doing, but that if we did the electronic agenda and packet, for example, that we might be able to save in the amount of time that we spend in copying and making packets of information. So I will be meeting this week with Derek Smith and with Katie Condon, who is Karen Condon, who is the tech person at the middle school, to see how we can map out a plan to distribute ones that we'll have in our possession, access over the summer anyway, and whether or not we want to move forward on that. So we got some positive comments after the meeting, and I think that's why we're at try.
I have one question.
Yes.
Does we have our own iPad? Can we be able to just?
Oh, yes, we can.
I wasn't sure if it would matter.
No, the idea really of the Chromebooks was, for some folks, more the consistency, but also the notion that many people are sharing computers within a family because not everyone in the household has its own computer and to make sure that everybody could access the information. So yes, that would be possible as well. We have had some wonderful end-of-year activities, and they're still ongoing at the different schools. Graduation was yesterday and, as always, was a very nice event, at least by my judgment and the notes and things that I've received, because we also had an awards night, an athletic awards night for seniors, we had junior awards night. A week before last, we've had some wonderful concerts going on in the buildings. I've got a lot of positive comments about the elementary, several of the elementary schools have a wonderful Memorial Day celebration to which veterans are invited, and we've got some nice notes and comments about that. So this is the time of year when good things are going on. We will be getting out the memo to the elementary principals and the middle and high school principals about the last day buses. The last day of school will be an early release with no lunch, so we'll confirm that with the principals in terms of the exact bus schedules, but that's a typical thing for us to do at this time of year, a decision to make, and we have done that. Vacancies and hiring. We have a list of vacancies. Vacancies, of course, are caused by a number of things. One would be we have some retirements, not a large number of them this year. In fact, two actually occurred during the past school year, so those replacements are already in place, so not many hiring efforts needed for those. But we also have some teachers that will be taking a full-year leave of absence, and we will need to replace them. We anticipate having to hire five teachers, or 5.5 teachers was our original estimate for kindergarten, and so we'll be going forward with that. So it's going to be a busy season. I would say that we probably are going to have more new hires when things all fold out than we had last year, but we're not ready to make the exact prediction, but that process is already ongoing. Hostings are out. I've already met with three new candidates that we've put in place so far, so that's a big project, as you're aware, for the summer. So I think those are the only things that I wanted to mention under superintendent's report.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Gallo? Anybody in for the audience? Communications.
Yes, I do have two communications I want to mention from the public. One is a letter that is in your packet tonight, as it arrived to me on Friday, and it is a letter complimenting, a letter to Andy compliments the music department and, in particular, John Abrams, and so you all have a copy of that letter. The other communication is that I received the MASC memo today that offers a reduced rate for the November conference. In fact, one signs up by July 15th, and it's a pretty good reduction of, I think, $100 in the registration fee, so I, you individually will receive, if you haven't already, that, but I thought I should mention it tonight. So if any of you have an intent of going to the conference and will need to register or think you may go, I'm pretty definite we would benefit by making as many early registrations as possible, and that's in November. And that's it for the outside communications.
Brad, student communications.
So since this is probably the largest amount of people that I've seen in a community meeting, I'll reintroduce myself. My name is Brad Patterson, and I'm a sophomore, I think, and as many of you know and were in attendance at, graduation was last Saturday, with speeches from Parker, Delly, Molly Bennett, and Chon Luka, and a great performance from the band. And also going with other news for seniors, last Thursday was senior prom at the aquarium, and was also the harbor walk, which luckily the weather did stay well enough for, as the weather was great for graduation yesterday. Also, on senior night was also a great success. And although the seniors may have left school, life will continue for the rest of us for another 22 days. Luckily, juniors will now be able to park and close due to seniors leaving. And unlucky for some seniors, the year hasn't ended due to track and other extracurricular activities. The track team also held a second graduation for the members of the track team that weren't able to attend due to competing at the Division II state championships on Saturday, and it was held for Mike Ferrara, Scott Pelara, Ian Ryan, and Mike Williams, and all four of them will be attending Allstate this Thursday, as will many of the other track athletes. Also, the senior one act plays will be this Wednesday. Model UN has just elected its new officers, as have many other clubs. And already planning for next year, there will be a meeting this Thursday for all fall sports after school in the auditorium. Both boys and girls lacrosse tournaments will start tomorrow after being delayed due to rain. And as Dr. Gallo mentioned, senior awards night, where around $400,000 were given out to 231 students, and with around 180 of them participating in sports. And finally, after starting with seniors, ending with freshmen, who will be having bio MCAS next Tuesday. Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Yes, Liza?
I would just also like to congratulate our girls and boys rowing team for winning the state championships in their rowing tournament as well, so. And the girls are on to nationals, so continued success with that program, very exciting for the kids.
We will talk about that more in the 48-hour news.
Okay, otherwise, we are going to have to hear a report from the science department. We have Director Katie Roberts with us. Do you need to dim the lights, or?
You have a policy for this? Great, all right. Well, thank you, Andy, and thank you to the school committee for allowing me to come this evening and highlight the accomplishments of my fantastic department. I'd like to thank the many members of the science department that took their evening to come join us for this, again, celebration of their accomplishments. And this time of year, I think it's always good to take a step back and think about our mission. And the mission of the science department is to educate all of our students to become scientifically literate citizens capable of creative problem-solving and complex analysis of science issues, and to also inspire future scientists and STEM professionals. Now, I, in many ways, have the easiest job in town because children are naturally born scientists. I have two young children at home, and science is what they do. They create, they discover, they observe, they demonstrate all of the skills that are necessary to be a great scientist. So our job as science teachers is to maintain that passion and to keep that fire alive. And as I said, this time of year is often nice to just go back to really basics of why we're here and why we're doing this. And many of us here in the room, at the very beginning of the year on Convocation Day, saw a fantastic presentation that was put together by H-Cam, set to the tune "Unwritten", and students were asked to kind of share their hopes and dreams. What struck me was of the students, how many of them expressed their desire to be a scientist. And I have a few of those clips here to share with you. Well, technical difficulty on the sound, so I'll just narrate the six students here. Of the six students, one wanted to be a pediatrician, one a veterinarian, two scientists, one engineer, and one professional sports player. So I think out of a sample size of six students, if we have five of six, I think we're doing pretty well. And again, just goes to show the natural inclination that our students have for science. Now, our last science department presentation was in 2010, and since that time, if you ask what's new, just about everything. So we have new staff, new science standards, new science facilities, new technology, new equipment, and a whole array of new STEM courses and initiatives. And so because I don't want to keep you here all evening, I'll be giving you just the briefest of highlights, but just know that in the past five years, we have had an enormous amount of change in our department and so many exciting new initiatives. So of the 25 members of my department, 10 of us have either changed rules or joined the hang of staff in the last five years. So starting with me, the director, so I have been in the district now for 18 years, but have been serving in the director role for four years. And then nine of the other individuals that you see here have been hired since 2011. So we have a very young staff, a very dynamic staff, and that young and dynamic staff was joining some very strong mid-career professionals who form kind of the skeleton, the core of our program. So the structure of our staff, I oversee the K-12 program. We are also fortunate to have a K-5 science specialist who works at the four schools, so he's shared between the four buildings. Our middle school staff is structured by grade level, and our high school staff is structured by their discipline. So we have several teachers in the life science strand and several in the physics and chemistry strand. You'll be hearing more about their kind of specific roles. So new staff, moving on to new science standards. I do not want to be here all evening sharing acronyms, but did want to just provide a little bit of clarification on the science standards because we have many masters. There are many outside forces that are informing and shaping our program, and just wanted to give you a quick rundown of what some of those forces are. So the phrase that you're probably hearing a lot about in the media right now is the term "common core." Common core does not refer to science content standards, but it does inform our curriculum. And that is because the common core literacy standards, which Laney Silva did a wonderful job of presenting during her program review, the common core literacy standards, one of the major shifts in those literacy standards is the emphasis on informational text, which back in the day we used to call nonfiction. Informational text is referring to kind of the technical reading that goes along with science. And so because of that trend, we are now really focusing on how we integrate high-quality nonfiction reading in our K-12 program, and particularly our elementary libraries. We've been really beefing up the informational text library with coordination with Laney and her department. Now, common core is a national mandate, and again, those literacy standards are informing our science program. There is no equivalent mandate for science on the national front, so there are no national science standards. But there was a national effort called the Next Generation Science Standard that was a partnership between a number of science players, including the National Academy of Science, the NSTA, and a number of other players. And these national standards do kind of inform many of the trends going on in science now. Again, it's not a national mandate, but is informing a lot of what's going on in science education right now. And one of the major trends, and is something I'll be sharing kind of throughout our K-12 overview this evening, is in addition to the traditional domains of life science and earth science and the physical sciences, nationally, there is a big emphasis on engineering design in science these days, and so that's something our department has been addressing at all levels, K-12. Now, here in Massachusetts, Massachusetts was one of the partners in those Next Generation Science Standards, but Massachusetts has elected not to adopt the Next Generation Science Standards wholesale, and instead has drafted a state-level group of science standards that we are in the process of transitioning to. This has been a long process of kind of rolling out the standards, and 2015, 2016 school year is when the clock starts for us in terms of our formal adoption of these new standards. So again, just to summarize, our Massachusetts standards are closely tied to, but are not identical to the Next Generation Science Standards. There are a few shifts from the old standards in terms of the engineering being a major focus, and also historically, science standards had been written on grade-level bands of K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8. They have now narrowed down specific topics that are developmentally appropriate for specific grade levels, and so that's the other major shift that we will be working to address over the next several years. Couple of other key points. In terms of the old Massachusetts standards and the new standards, there really isn't a whole lot of impact at the high school level. The standards, as written before, are pretty much intact, but there are some pretty significant changes to the elementary curriculum and some shifts at the middle school. So again, this is going to be forming the bulk of our work over the next several years. Another thing just to note is that Massachusetts will continue to administer a science MCAS, so there is no park equivalent for science, and so we will be administering the science MCAS for the foreseeable future. And then one other kind of trend in forming our science curriculum is the advanced placement curriculum has also undergone a pretty significant change in the past several years. Our AP Biology and AP Chemistry teachers have been hard at work in addressing those shifts. And one of the major shifts is that rather than having kind of cookbook-type procedures for labs, there's a much bigger emphasis on students designing their own procedures. And there's been a lot more sophisticated statistical analysis that's expected of students, something that many of us wouldn't have addressed until graduate school. That is now considered part of the AP curriculum. And so that does have kind of a trickle-down effect to our introductory courses because we are preparing our students to be successful in those AP science courses. Okay, new facilities. We could also spend another evening or two describing all of the new facilities in town, but two, obviously, that impact science the most. The new middle school science rooms have had a major effect on our program, and I would like to share some of those highlights. And of course, our new high school greenhouse has been a source of pride and excitement, and I'll be sharing some of the projects that have spun off from that new greenhouse facility. With those new facilities came lots of new technology and equipment from a variety of sources, ranging from Hangham Ed Foundation, who's been amazingly generous to our science program over the years. And we've also received grants ranging from places from NASA to Mass BioEd to locally aquarium and the Hangham Garden Club. So we're very fortunate to have some outside support for many of our new science initiatives. Just to give you a flavor of some of the new equipment that we've acquired since our last program review in 2010, DNA analysis has become a major focus of our biology curriculum as it becomes increasingly molecular, and so we've received some new equipment to allow us to do some more sophisticated labs related to that, thermal cycler. And then in the greenhouse, one of the major pieces of equipment that we've acquired with that project are large hydroponic arrays that allow us to do a number of experiments and manipulate variables and so on when we're growing plants in that facility. Few other kind of fun tools that we've enjoyed experimenting with. We do both at the middle school and the high school, have 3D printers that we've been integrating into our curriculum, and we have a number of digital probe ware that is new that we are beginning to explore and experiment with. And then finally, our new courses and initiatives, I'll be kind of breaking those out by grade level, but this slide here just gives you an overview of the number of projects that we have been working on, and I will be addressing each of these by grade level. So let's start with our youngest learners, our elementary science program. As I said, our elementary learners are just primed for science. I would argue that it is often their favorite part of the day. And what really makes that program tick are the people that you see here on this slide. So elementary teachers will be the first to admit that they are often not science experts. Many of them are science enthusiasts, but our elementary teachers, for the most part, are literacy and math experts. And so it's very important that we provide our elementary teachers adequate support so they're comfortable and familiar with the science topic that they are teaching. And in order to do that, we have a really strong science leadership at the elementary level. Each grade level, we have one representative from each school that form the science leaders for the elementary schools. And we meet monthly to do things like curriculum planning and piloting new materials and so on, and again, it's a really dynamic group of teachers. In addition to that core group of teachers, we're also fortunate, again, to have an elementary science specialist, Ryan Conroy, who helps oversee the curriculum. He does model lessons and very involved in the schools. And some of you may not know, one of our elementary principals, Chuck Cormier, was an elementary science specialist in his prior career, and so he often, as you can see from the slide there, we can pull him out for a workshop here and there, and he's been a real asset to our program. So our kindergarten science units over the next few years will be changing, so when I do my next program review three years from now, our lineup of units and kids will look very different than they do now. But some classic topics that you would anticipate, so life cycles in first grade, solids and liquids, classification, soils, and so on. So again, no surprises on the topics, but just know that over the next few years, based on the recommendations from the new standards, some of those topics will be shifting to different grade levels, and we'll also be adding some new topics to that roster. So I know that Heather Rodriguez every year gives an overview of the testing along with Ellen Keen, so I don't want to be redundant with their efforts, but I do think it's important to give a quick highlight of how we're doing on the state-level assessments. And on the elementary level, we've really been very successful on those assessments. Our elementary program, as I've mentioned in the binder that you received, usually is ranking very top of the state. One of our schools this year was number seven out of 800-plus schools, so again, on the elementary MCAS assessment, we have had some really strong scores. And just to give you a sense of the types of questions that are asked on that assessment, so a typical kind of third-grade moon phase question, electric circuits lining up with our fourth-grade unit, food webs, food chains lining up with our fifth-grade unit. And again, the one area that's one that we're continuing to work on is engineering, so we do have a number of engineering initiatives that I would like to share. So we do not have time this evening to go over all of the curriculum initiatives that we have engaged in over the past five years. So I did just want to share a couple of highlights from our elementary program, what's new and novel. So again, one thing that we're very proud of in town is our field science program for our fifth graders. Every elementary school in town has a nature trail, and our elementary students in fifth grade, in addition to having classroom science instruction, they also have one science class per week out of a six-day cycle with our elementary science specialist, Brian Conroy. And those lessons are often outside on the nature trail or inside engaging in some real project-based hands-on learning. And Brian brings with him a lot of field experience, and so he's really enriched that program. Now, as I mentioned, a common theme throughout our grade levels this year is engineering is an area that we have been focusing on. And in addition to being part of the standard, it's also just a really important skill for students to master, and there have been some great studies and research done on the lost art of tinkering. Many of us as students had the chance to play with things like tinker toys and so on. I know I was a fan of them myself. And students, just as they get busy, kind of really lose that time, so we do need to make some time to introduce that to the curriculum and to keep that creativity flowing. And so this year, at the elementary level, we, of course, always start with professional development for our teachers. And this year, we did some great workshops, particularly one in January, where we were introducing elementary teachers to the engineering design process, giving them some challenges. And actually, our very own leadership team participated in some of these challenges and did quite well at one of our leadership team meetings. So one of the, just to give you a sense of the types of challenges, this was a family challenge that we published on our engineering website, where students were charged with creating a spaghetti structure that would support a marshmallow. Simple materials. I recommend. Simple materials, I recommend that you try it at home. It's more difficult than you would imagine. Again, it gets at some really sophisticated engineering principles using very simple materials. And many corporations use this as kind of a leadership development type thing. It was popularized by an engineer named Tev Wujack who was an engineer at Autodesk. So again, something you can try at home. And then each grade level, grades three through five, had an engineering design challenge that related to some science content that they were already working with. So in third grade, for example, one of their units that they study is weather. And so in the context of weather, we introduced some design challenges where students were charged with building a structure to withstand an extreme weather event. So this year certainly had plenty of examples of extreme weather events with our blizzards and hurricanes and so on. And so again, it really addressed some of the science content, but also added a fun element of challenge to that. In fourth grade, they spent a lot of time working on energy transformation and electric circuits. So we're in the process now of wrapping up some model lessons in which students were creating wind turbines and seeing how much electric output they could generate. Fifth graders, we've been doing some different engineering activities related to the idea of taking flight. So everything from marshmallow catapults to old-fashioned little flingers and so on. And so they had a lot of really great time working with those. And again, they are all aligned to the standards. In addition to that, we are now in kind of the earliest stages of that alignment process to those shifting standards. And so this year, we did our first kind of professional development that's starting to help us in that alignment process, starting with our third grade teachers who will be teaching a newly revised unit on weather. And so that will be one of our focuses for next year is adopting that new unit. And then I couldn't be more thrilled at the timing of our full-day kindergarten initiative syncing with our new science standards because there are kindergarten-specific science standards. And with the half-day kindergarten, there just was no way to make room for science in the day. So again, I'm thrilled and I appreciate all the work of the kindergarten committee in making that happen. So in cooperation with the kindergarten teachers, we've been exploring some really fun and age-appropriate science materials, including one kit on forces in motion. There are some units on plants and weather and so on. And so we're very much looking forward to getting those projects rolling next year. And again, next year, we will also be working with our third grade teachers on piloting some new weather materials. Now, the middle school, of course, we have had so many changes there and all for the better. The middle school students this year walked into brand-new science classrooms. And I would say the grade level for which this had the most significant transformation was sixth grade. Our sixth grade students were in classrooms that were not designed for science. We retrofitted them to the best we could in order to make them appropriate for science. But sixth graders now have full-fledged science lab facilities, which has really expanded what we can do in sixth grade with that curriculum. And so the structure of the new science rooms includes movable lab tables that can be reconfigured for different activities. So they can be configured one way for a roundtable discussion, configured a different way if you're doing more of a chemical or electrical lab that you need sinks or plugs for. And so the flexibility that this affords has really given us some more opportunity to do some creative labs, again particularly transforming the sixth grade curriculum. With the new middle school, we're just really scratching the surface of what we can do with all of the new technology that we now have at the middle school, ranging from some of the digital sensors that we have. We're now just, you know, in the beginning stages of our one-to-one Chromebook initiative. We do have some science iPads that have been getting heavy use, document cameras and so on. So we really, again, are just scratching the surface of how that technology can transform our curriculum. And our middle school curriculum is becoming increasingly digital. So as teachers are becoming comfortable with the Chromebook initiative, I think we'll be seeing a lot more digital learning, particularly on the Google platform, which we're all kind of getting up to speed on. Now, just to give you an overview of the middle school curriculum, fairly traditional in that we have kind of an integrated science module in grade six. In grade seven, we have life science. And in grade eight, that is where our kind of two levels kind of really first start to diverge. So our eighth grade students are studying an earth science curriculum. Our eighth grade advanced students are actually largely skipping over earth science, heading directly into a physical science course called IPS. And that, although unfortunate that those students are missing some earth science content, does afford those students the opportunity to take more APs in the upper level. And so again, it is a sacrifice having them miss that, some of that content, but it does afford them those opportunities in the upper levels. Now, our middle school MCAS scores have been an area of targeted improvement over the last few years and we have been seeing some strides in those. Statewide, our middle school science scores are significantly better than the state, but you'll notice that there is a pattern kind of statewide. If you take a look at the middle schools in Massachusetts in terms of their science scores, math scores and ELA scores, you can see that this is a trend that we have all been working on. But when you take a look at the middle school exam, this looks probably more similar to what we were covering in high school. So when we were in middle school, things like karyotyping were not part of what we were assessed on at that level. So again, a very sophisticated test. And it is covering four disciplines of content, so life science, earth science, physical science and engineering, all on the same test. So again, everything from sun-earth-moon systems to contour maps to Newton's laws to some fairly sophisticated chemistry. And so our, and some technology and engineering, which I'll discuss. And so we have been working very targetedly on different areas. So this is kind of our game plan when we get this printout in the fall. We take a look at, you can see that for the most part, we are performing well above the state average on most questions. But anytime our bubble meets the state average, that's where we're taking a look at our curriculum and adjusting our curriculum and making some adjustments to some of the activities that we're doing. So just a few examples, in the past year or two, we have noticed that our students need some additional work on interpreting motion graphs. So we incorporated some new activities into our sixth grade curriculum. Our seventh graders were having some difficulty identifying common ancestors in a large map. So again, we're working on some targets there. And so that has been providing our science teachers with some very kind of specific areas to work on. Again, we do not have time to cover all of the projects and initiatives, but there were three areas where I really wanted to highlight some of our progress and accomplishments of the middle school. One of the things that we're most proud of and something that we had been hoping to get up and running for many years is our new grade six STEM course. So in addition to their sixth grade classroom curriculum, our sixth graders also meet with a specialist teacher, a STEM teacher, and working on some of those engineering concepts that I mentioned earlier. Our sixth grade students are doing everything from CAD and 3D printing to doing design challenges related to thermal transfer, turbine design, coding and so on. And one of the projects I just wanted to share with you, our students, as part of their STEM curriculum, were really trying to, again, create citizens who will go out in the world and work in business and so on. And they were creating ad campaigns for their creations. And so our students, I don't have the sound working, but you can see that they were creating their own ads for a series of coats that they were designing for an Everest truck. And again, our students and parents came to observe their presentations. We got a lot of great feedback from that. We've also, at the eighth grade level, incorporated in our regular curriculum, some additional engineering activities, particularly on bridges, which is a common MCAS topic. And then, given that it is middle school, one of the things that we're most proud of is that we do engage adolescents and are doing things that are age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate. And for middle schoolers, what is most appropriate is experiential learning, really engaging these students, getting them out of their comfort zone. And that's accomplished primarily through a number of our science-related clubs. So as you know, at the middle school, we have a very active adventure club. We also have a science explorers club that runs trips to area institutions. They've taken trips to the American Museum of Natural History, the Museum of Science and so on. Many of our students participate in the grade eight expedition, which is run by some of our science teachers. It's not a school-sponsored event, but it is very much involving many of our students. And then at the middle school, we do also have, it's a single club that participates in two events. Our middle school students participate in something called the Future City Competition, which is an engineering event. And our students this year won an award for best presentation at that event. And we do also have a robotics club using Lego NXT kits. Now, the high school has had, again, a number of new initiatives, but just wanted to give you a quick overview of what the science curriculum looks like. And also just stress that one of our strengths at the high school is the range of our elective offerings. We do have something for everyone and to inspire all of those future engineers and doctors and lab scientists and so on. So a typical sequence for our honors or Level Two students is they will be taking biology as freshmen, as I mentioned to you in the middle school curriculum. Those students are somewhat fast-tracked to make room for their AP courses and so on during their junior and senior year. Taking as sophomores, chemistry and as junior physics. Our Level Three, our college prep program, those students take a newly revamped integrated science course as freshmen. And we do have some of the instructors for that course here this evening who have worked very hard to make that a relevant project-based course that's priming the wheel for success in our upper-level biology and chemistry courses. So those students would then take biology as sophomores with great success, chemistry as juniors. And then junior and senior year, many of our students with an interest in science actually take more than one science course, doubling up more than, say, 100 students a year are doubling up in elective. So might take chemistry and environmental science or physics and electronics and so on. Our exit outcome in terms of the state requirements is our biology MCAS. And again, we've had great success with that. We have had in some years 100% pass rate on that exam and that's to the credit of our very hard-working biology teachers. You can see that this is also a very sophisticated test. However, it is a single year of content and we have studied that test inside and out and know what we need to do to prepare our students for success on that very important exit outcome. Now, we do feel that the MCAS, though important, only shows one dimension of a student's kind of proficiency in science. And so a couple of years back with the support of Dr. McCann and with the creativity of our biology teachers, we decided to implement a biology final product, a final project, which is another exit outcome for those students in that biology course. And it's a research and presentation-based assessment where students are applying our expectations for student learning. So can they read and write and research and communicate to people effectively? And again, we think this adds a really important dimension to our assessments. Rather than doing bubble tests, this is more like what students will be seeing in the real world. Can they read and analyze and present and make a compelling argument? Our SATs in science have been very strong. And again, we've had scores averaging in the high 600s in all of our disciplines in biology, chemistry and physics. Now, the AP science curriculum revisions, I did just touch on briefly. And just know that our AP teachers have been hard at work, making some revisions to our curriculum to meet the inquiry standards that are new in AP. And again, our AP scores in science really speak for themselves. We've had our AP chemistry course, some years we've had all fives and we've had just very strong showing in our chemistry and our physics. So again, credit to the hard work of our AP teachers. Now, at the high school, again, no time to highlight all of the new initiatives, so just wanted to highlight three of our new initiatives. I think it was maybe three or four years ago, some of you who are on the school committee remember that I gave a presentation on some of the biotechnology initiatives that we have at our high school, driven in part by the Mass BioEd Council that has donated quite a bit of funds to area schools to purchase biotechnology equipment. And because we had such interest from students in that, we did, with the blessing of the school committee, a couple of years ago, add a new course for upper-level high school students on biotechnology. And again, the study of biology has become increasingly molecular. And so our students are doing things, again, we would not have dreamed of in high school. They are analyzing DNA, that bacterial transformation, those glowing things up the top there, they're actually splicing genes and creating new organisms. That time-lapse video on the right-hand side was actually prepared by one of our students when they were running DNA electrophoresis in their biotechnology course. And again, we're looking for well-rounded citizens. So that poster in the middle is a sample of a student product where they were representing their knowledge of biotechnology in a way that is visually appealing. And our biotechnology students have also been reaching out to the broader community. So many of the biotech firms in the area, including Sirono, Genzyme and so on, offer a number of programs for our students to become involved and maintain their interest in biotechnology. So just as I was going to kind of print on our binders for science, we were alerted, as many of you are aware, that our high school was recently nominated a Green Ribbon School, which is a national award by the Department of Education. And one of the criteria for being a Green Ribbon School, in addition to the basics of reusing and recycling, is being especially good at effectively incorporating STEM civic skills and green career pathways, which is something that our department has very much been striving for. And one of the contributing factors to our Green Ribbon status is the new greenhouse at the high school, which has afforded us really fantastic opportunities to increase the environmental awareness of our students. So since our greenhouse opened in 2014, we have had our first kind of real growing season with a variety of crops and so on. We've successfully hosted some staff lunches, a greenhouse cafeteria meal at the high school. We've worked a little bit with the local food pantry and have been able to kind of incorporate a social justice element by donating some of our produce to the food pantry. Our students have presented at local conferences, including the Mass Farm to School Conference. And in terms of the curriculum connection, I think we're really just getting warmed up. So this year, in the greenhouse, this is just a very small sampling of some of the creative projects that teachers applied in the greenhouse. Everything in basic biology, doing some corn genetics experiments, some rooting hormone experiments, soil analysis, we've been doing seed saving. Next year, we'll be getting some aquaponic set up. And so again, we're really just scratching the surface of what this greenhouse will afford our students. One group of students that's really been served by this new facility is our moderate special needs students. A greenhouse requires a lot of maintenance and monitoring and our students have really developed a really specialized skill set in particularly maintaining our hydroponic arrays. The students are in there every day checking the pH and the temperature and so on and really developing some valuable skills. We're excited that next year, we'll be able to take our greenhouse to the next level by offering a new botany elective course. And we've had some, a lot of interest from students in that offering. Again, that will allow us to go even further with some of our creative projects. And then also contributing to our Green Ribbon status is some other env- And then also contributing to our Green Ribbon status is some other environmental projects that our teachers and students have been involved with. So we are fortunate at the high school to be literally right on the Weir River. We have a stream running right by us at the Union Street Bridge, and our environmental science classes have kind of taken that on as a project, as well as our high school green committee. And our students are actually contributing to a national database in terms of monitoring the stream and its level, and it's been particularly important in the past year with the drought that we've had. And so the government officials are very grateful for the work that the students are doing, and it is very much impacting their policy and decision-making. And related to that, also in the Weir River, we've been working with some state biologists on a Head Start program from some threatened fisheries in our area, particularly the rainbow smelt. And so our students were given a special permit and license from the state to collect some fish eggs, bring them back to the lab, raise them up, and then release them. And so that was a really valuable, real-world experience for our student and also very good for our local fisheries. And just to end on probably one of our proudest notes at the high school, last year, with the great initiative of one of our high school students who's here this evening, a graduate, recently graduated senior Billy Lincoln, he approached our very willing victim of a high school advisor, which would be Paula Flanagan, and said, "I had a great idea. Let's start a robotics team." And Paula said, "Sure, we'll just have to, you know, get that rolling." And so Billy and Paula worked together, along with some other students, wrote a grant, and we received some funds from NASA to get our first-ever robotics team up and running. And last year, it was a little bit like the Bad News Bears, as everyone of that generation, a little bit like the Bad News Bears winning the baseball tournament. Our robotics rookie team, in their first year, actually won one of the competitions at Northeastern University, so a really great moment. But it wasn't the winning, it was the initiative that they took in getting this program up and running. And I just wanted to share what I thought was a really great quote from one of our team members who wrote this for kind of his college essay, but just shared how important this was in really rounding out his high school experience. And in fact, we have taken away a historian from the world because he had planned to go and major in history in college and has decided that engineering is really the way to go after this experience. And I know many of you have probably seen clips of these competitions on TV, but it really is on par with an exciting athletic event. So the students are engaging in various competitions. Last year's competition was more of a sports-type activity. This year, it was a recycling competition where they had to scoop up as many recycling cans as they could with their robot, put them into recycle bins, and stack them up. And again, it has a really great energy at these competitions and really inspires a love of engineering and adds a fun element to it. So with that, that kind of wraps up the overview of our K-12 program. Again, any one of those bullet points could have served as a whole evening of discussion. But just wanted to end with our program's strengths, and you can see what I consider be our program's strength and bold letter there, and that is our staff. We have an incredibly dedicated, talented, well-educated, well-traveled staff who love to work with adolescents and love to share their passion with science. And in addition to that, we are also grateful for the wonderful facilities, some of the new technology and equipment. Couple of initiatives, including the restoration of our elementary science specialists, really put us in good stead for these upcoming changes to our standards. At the high school, the range of our high school elective offerings, the fact that we really do have something for everyone and are preparing our students for what comes next. And just the fact that we have a coordinated and vertically articulated K-12 curriculum, I think speaks well for our district and its support for science. In terms of our needs, there are a couple of really pressing needs as we kind of move forward into these new standards. One is we're in need of common planning time for science at our middle school. So right now, because we have a teaming model at the middle school, which puts students at the center, and I definitely think that is most important at the middle school, but because teachers are meeting in teams, they're not having as much subject-specific time as we would like. And so that's something that I would like to see happen over the next several years. And then in other department needs, we do have kind of a big bubble coming up from the middle school, and we do, it's very important for safety to keep our class sizes at 24 or less, and so we are planning for that bubble as they come through. I would like to add some additional STEM offerings to, again, really keep us at the cutting edge of the standards. Long-term funding for our robotics program is something that we're actively working on and outreach to corporations and so on for sponsorship. More time to really thoughtfully integrate the technology into the middle school and high school and making that a focus of our professional development. And again, this standards alignment project is going to be keeping us very busy. So over the next several years, we will be making a lot of requests for material resources, curriculum resources, but most importantly, the time to effectively address these new standards. Now, I began our presentation with voices of our youngest students expressing their desire, again, five out of six was pretty good, to become a scientist. And at the other end of this, I wanted to share some letters. I asked our high school staff, they often hear back from the field, from our students who are off in undergraduate programs and graduate programs and, again, working in the field of science. And this was just a small sampling from the many letters that our teachers had, sharing the really exciting things that they're doing now in the field of science, thanking our teachers for how well-prepared that they are. And these guys really are serving as an inspiration for those younger students coming up, and we can say, yes, this is what you can do with that love and that passion as you get out into the real world. So more exciting accomplishments to come. So thank you for the opportunity to present this evening, and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have about our science program. And if there are any scientists in the room, we're always looking for guest lectures, so...
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Ray?
That was wonderful.
Thank you, thank you.
And this was a lot of material to get through, but you made it nice and adjustable. Just a quick comment, my son loved the sixth-grade STEM program.
Terrific.
Really great. I'm sure it'll evolve and continue to, but it was a great experience this year. About the Grade Eight, so the choice in the science, going with the IPS moves you onto that track to potentially be able to take more APs in high school, but you don't have the earth science.
Yes.
Then you have to take the MCAS, the eighth grade, which has the earth science on it. So how do you...
It is a balance, and you know, when I started many years ago, Doc, Dr. Gallo is actually my department head, and I know she had a quote, "You have to be careful of serving multiple masters, and you need to think about what your exit outcome is." So the eighth-grade MCAS is one master as you would will, but what we're trying to do is to prepare educated citizens for their future career. And so balancing that out, if we're making a small sacrifice on the eighth-grade MCAS in order to get our advanced students to where they need to be, in order to get what they need in high school, it is a sacrifice in terms of our scores, but I do think that it serves those students best in the long run.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. And just my last question was, so you mentioned, in terms of needs, the way providing for science-specific planning time, because it's now a team-oriented approach. So how would you suggest providing that time?
That's something we've been working on, and as, it's the toughest time right now with the bulge in population that we have. I think as that bulge moves through, we might have a little bit more breathing room in terms of scheduling, but at this point, every science room is occupied just about every period. And so rather than the model that we have at the high school where all science teachers are free A-block, what we'll try to do is to at least get some pairs with a common duty that we can be creative with. So it won't be perfect, but certainly at least having our youngest staff members having some common planning time with their mentor, you know, beyond the school day. Again, we do have department meetings once a month, but only so much can be accomplished there, and the teachers are very diligent about doing more on their own time, but trying to build that into the school day, I think, would greatly strengthen that program.
Thank you.
Yes, just wanted to thank you for, so all of the grant programs that you apply for, obviously you've had a significant impact, and I would imagine that takes a lot of time of yours and your staff that are seeking these and applying for them. So thank you for doing that, because obviously it enriches the program for the kids.
Yes, thank you. And you know, not just the outside grants, again, Hingham Ed Foundation has been fantastic and, again, so supportive of our program. And I know that Hingham Ed Foundation, they're really trying to promote creative thinking, and I do think our staff feels like if they come up with a creative idea, that Hingham Ed Foundation will be there to fund it, so we greatly appreciate that.
Any comments from the audience, questions? Katie, thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Wonderful report.
Thank you.
Carol? With the number of people here, oh, one thing, Katie, do you want to quickly introduce your staff that's here?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes. Hang on a sec. Yeah, one thing I forgot to mention, that Katie did have many of her staff here, so we might as well take the opportunity to meet them.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, so we have Paula Flanagan, she's a Level Three chemistry, integrated science, and our robotics coach. We also have, he's not a staff member, but did just want to acknowledge Billy Lincoln, who is the captain of our high school robotics team. Yeah. Along with Jim Flanagan, one of our robotics coaches. We have Eileen Sharkey, who teaches physics. We have Jaclyn Bopray, one of the newest members of our high school staff, and interesting fact about Jaclyn is she is a bee expert, so she is a statewide expert in beekeeping. See, we also have Gary Forrester, again, another new member of our staff, AP physics teacher, who's done a wonderful job of filling big shoes in AP physics and really done a fantastic job, also a robotics coach. And then two other teachers who are here snuck out on me before I could acknowledge them, which, one is Jan Whitney, one of our AP chemistry teachers, and again, Wes Hutchinson, our environmental science and oceanography teacher. So thank you for giving us the chance to acknowledge them.
And of course, they're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but...
Yes, but I think we all may.
But if you're gonna happen to move, that's okay.
Yes, yes, okay, great. Thank you again for coming, folks.
Great, thank you. Do you thi, I'm thinking right now, if you don't mind, maybe with, due to the crowd here, should we move 6.5 up and go over that now? Would you be ready to do that? Okay, why don't we do it then? Unless there's other objections. So in our agenda right now, that was 6.1. We seem to have a large crowd here, which I have a feeling is going to be for 6.5 to review proposed changes of the usage guideline, and I'm sure the crowd would love to know about our subcommittee assignments, our full-day kindergarten letter, and our summer meeting schedule, but in pursuit of time...
Do you mind if we do the subcommittee assignments department, we have people here for that.
Okay.
Shouldn't we take a minute or two?
All right. So every, so everyone should have, everyone should have received a list of the subcommittee assignments and liaison assignments for 2015, 2016. In the packet that you have at your desk, Dr. Gallo, where's the letter, but, yes, the job description?
Yes.
Oh, there it is, right there. So in the, in the job description is a job title for Facilities and Procurement Manager, Ray, as Chair of the Long Range Planning. Dr. Gallo would like input, and I feel that would be best if your group takes that lead on that. And then secondly, in the Long Range Planning, in Long Range Planning, Dr. Schreier had mentioned with the new Facilities Manager, should you expand the role of Long Range Planning to consider facilities? And I think that'd be a good topic for you guys to discuss and at least maybe in this first year, take it as a trial. So are there any other questions? So, okay.
If you read what the assignments are, so the people...
You have all the list right there, and...
No, I understand, but for...
Sure, I'll be happy to read that off to you. So, salary negotiations will be chaired by Carol, Eileen, and Liza. Long Range Planning will be chaired by Ray, Ed, and Cynthia. Policy will be chaired by Liza, Eileen, Cynthia. Special Ed will be chaired by Ed, Carol, and Ray. And Community Outreach will be Cynthia, who's the chair, Liza, and Andy. Moving on to, now, we'll move to, to the fields. 6.5, 6.5 is to review proposed changes to the usage guidelines for the high school multipurpose fields to be submitted to the planning board and take action as appropriate. Carol did a wonderful job getting the neighbors together. We have a lot of work here. Hopefully, we can move forward with some of this so that we can go in front of the planning board on the 8th.
So I would suggest that Margaret Conaty come up and perhaps talk about the basis for the request to the planning board. Margaret, you want to come up and identify yourself? Thank you.
Well, Margaret is coming, I might mention that in the packet tonight, and also in the packet FYI that came the other day, there were two letters relating to this from citizens that all of the committee members have heard.
There were three seats up front.
Have received, I'm sorry.
If anybody wants to sit down.
Who wants next to me, though?
They don't want to sit next to you?
My name's Martha Conaty, 15 Daly Road, also Director of Athletics, Hingham High School. At the, you know, with the development of our field and the usage policy, after a year, it was, it was requested by the planning board that we take a one-year look back, and so that's what we've done over the past couple of months. And we had a meeting about, oh, about three weeks ago, and it was really a marathon in this room. We, it was four hours, and it was consisted of some of the neighbors from Downing Street and also down in the Meadows, and also, I believe, on Union Street, and then some former members of the committee that helped to develop the policy, myself and school committee. And we talked, you know, a lot about the past year and all of the usage. One of the things that I, as the athletic director, that came about for me, having the lights go off at 8:30 was problematic in that, in the fall, I have four teams, girls' and boys soccer, field hockey, and football, all trying to get on that field. And so giving each team a three-hour, I mean, a two-hour practice, it was three to five, five to seven, and seven to nine would work better for us. And so, and that's, that's only three time slots, so somebody, you know, was always either rotating in or out or sharing a field. So that was one of my requests, that we, that we extend the time to be on till 9 o'clock. And, you know, the committee, and we talked quite a bit about it, and it seemed there was a consensus that that was appropriate, and that was something that people could live with. My other, it was a pretty strong concern, the, the sound system for announcing goals in games. Now, and I want to make this very clear, football, varsity football only, is the only sport that has a play-by-play, okay? And so that's something, our varsity football game starts at 7 o'clock on a Friday night, and... football games start at seven o'clock on a Friday night. And, and so, that is a play-by-play. And that is, they have three home games during the season. And so, that stayed the same. But it was more of our six o'clock games. So, field hockey, boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' lacrosse. Their games, with the exception of field hockey, a six o'clock game would go till about 7:40, 7:45. We had a, you know, the time had to stop at 7:30. And I gave the example a few weeks ago of, if, if our state tournament game for girls' soccer had been played at Hingham rather than at Marshfield, we won that game with 10 seconds left in the game. We scored a goal. We wouldn't have been able to announce, you know, who scored the goal. It was, you know, it was one of the most exciting games of my career that, you know, that I've watched, and we would've gone silent here. And I just felt that, you know, it, it's important to be able to finish the game with, with audio. These games, and let me make myself very clear on this, these games, we announce the starting lineup and we will play the national anthem. And then, the rest of the game, we announce a goal. So, scores are typically in, you know, field hockey, one-nothing, two-one in soccer. They're usually about three to two, you know, four to three, one to nothing. It's only lacrosse that there's an expansion. It's, it's, the games, the scores can get to be like 10 to nine or, you know, eight to seven. So, there are more. But there's only an announcement of, you know, a goal by Carol Falvey, assisted by Cynthia Galco, okay? And, and then it's over. And so, in the course of a game, it's basically, it's really, it's rather brief. And so, we talked about that quite a bit and, but it seemed at the end of the night, we came to consensus that, yes, audio can stay on till the end of the game and felt that at eight o'clock, the sound system would be off. There would be, and, and I just don't see our games going that long. You know, we start at six. And so, that was, that was the area that I felt we came to, we found a common ground and that was something important. Have I left anything else?
Nope.
Those were my requests?
Right.
All right, so, so maybe you should stay there, 'cause I'm sure that there'll be some questions.
Sure.
So, we did have a very long marathon meeting. We went through, you know, I feel like both sides, we compromised. The entire school committee was here. And I think we walked away, I thought, with Margaret, like Margaret, I think I felt like there was consensus on the issues. When I sent a draft around saying, this is what was agreed to, this is what we decided to withdraw, that some of the neighbors had some concerns, I would say, with the public address system. So, I'd like to just review what I feel. We have consensus on, and then maybe we can talk a little bit about perhaps what there is no consensus on. So, I think there, I would say that there was consensus on having the lights on until 9:00 PM to accommodate an extra practice during the day, Monday for Friday. We eliminated the football restriction for the use of lights in the fall for the three late games because we're, we're looking for gender equity here. And so, a Friday night lights would be available to any sport, not just football. Fall and spring audio, we agreed to an 8:00 PM hard stop on the PA system, subject to a limitation of three evening games per varsity sport per season, with a maximum of three night games per week unless it was rain-out scheduling was required. That was what I thought the agreement was. Subsequently, I'm not sure there is total agreement on the audio use part of that. We also agreed to post schedules online, including the use of the PA system. Hingham Youth Football asked for a few things as part of this modification request. We are the owner of the property, so we have to afford them the opportunity to make that request based on our ownership. The consensus on that was to start their September games at 11:30 instead of at noon. Limited play-by-play for one game per Sunday, and we would review the proposed limited play-by-play format. We agreed to add emergency notification announcements. They had had, somebody was injured and they thought they couldn't use the PA to get the police or to notify people, so we agreed on that. And we also agreed in general that the working committee, group of residents from the different neighborhoods, would meet twice a year to sit down with Margaret and talk about how the season went, what were any problems that came up, to kind of have an open dialogue. So, what has surfaced as non-consensus since that May 14th meeting is, I think the assumption has been, and if you look at the planning board decision, it talks about how the neighbors were really not concerned with the daytime use of the field. You look at page four. With respect to the proposed field light for the multipurpose fields, some residents also voiced concerns about nighttime use of amplified sound to be mounted on the light structures, light structures and in the bleachers. And then also talked about, while there was general consensus on the daytime use of athletic field complex not being at issue, a number of directive butters, other residents, expressed concern about the nighttime use of amplified sound. So, this came up during our meeting. I thought we had resolved that we were focused on nighttime and not daytime use, but that, apparently, some of the neighbors would now like to limit the overall use, day and night, going forward. Let's see. Also, some concern about halftime activities. Formerly, we only allowed three opportunities for football. And again, that was a gender issue for us. So, we seek, we were seeking to expand that to allow other varsity teams to have a dance team opportunity. And just for, for the audience, I'm not sure everybody knows this, dance team is a varsity sport, part of the athletic department. We also asked for MIAA tournament play to be able to host, as Margaret, I think you talked about how we went to other communities for soccer. And there seemed to be some consensus on that, but I think some, some residents now would like to limit that to a one tournament game per year or one per season.
Can I address that?
Absolutely.
When the MIAA, they go around the state and look at facilities, and they've asked various schools to host. For instance, I believe our soccer teams were at Canton High this year. They, and Canton hosted both of our games. And then, Marshfield High hosted the state tournament game. And it's, we've always been hosted because we haven't had a facility that was appropriate for a tournament venue. So, I, I think, in fairness, we need to be able to, to return the favor and, and host. But when the MIA comes to you and, and says, we would like to use your facility, I can't say to them, okay, well, you only have one day, you know, one game, or you have to be off the field by 7:30 or, or anything like that. It's, it's, typically, it's two games. And one might start at five and the other one starts at seven. We're dealing with students. We don't want them out very late, but we also wanna have the opportunity so fans and parents can come and watch. And so, we want the, the timeframe of the games are important. But I don't get to say, you know, it's either yes or no, is basically it. We would like to host the tournament at your school. And it's yes or it's no. And, and what's the benefit? The benefit for us? Well, it's pride. It's being able to, you know, show off your community, but it's also giving back. I mean, we certainly have had our fair share of going to other schools. And, and, you know, what you, it's, you do your fair share by saying, yes, you can come to our community. And, and you, basically, you're, you're extending an invitation.
So, I have one more comment.
Sure.
So, it's typically the MIA gets one, one day, and then we host two games on that.
That, that's usually it, you know?
So, we can do like-
They, they plan them, well, they plan them out well in advance. But, for instance, they might say to me, you know, would you be interested in hosting? And then they might turn around to, you know, Foxborough High and ask them the same thing. And it all depends on who, who's playing. They want to find a central location. They wanna find a location that the schools haven't been to before, okay? So, there's no unfair advantage, like, oh, this team always plays there. So, that's what, so they, there's a number of schools in the, in the running.
But they wouldn't say host a girls' soccer tournament on the whole-
No, they wouldn't do that.
Yeah, so, but it would be restricted typically one day.
Typically, it's-
And it might be two games on that one day.
Yes.
But they wouldn't, so they wouldn't be a time where they would say the girls' tournament is on Thursday and the boys' tournament's on Friday? I mean, is that a possibility? And that's-
No. I mean, I don't wanna say it could never happen. I think that they try to play them together. You know, we, when we played the state tournament game, our girls were there, but then, as we were walking off the field, as I recall, Concord Carlisle Boys were coming on. So, they like to play them together. So, you know, a lot of factors fall into it as well, weather, you know, weather can be an issue. So, you know, they, they do the best they can, though, to, to make it efficient. You know, they, they would rather not split up the fan bases and make, make one group, you know, go to one site. Because then they also have to bring a staff to that site. If you're following, you know, staff to run that, that show, they have to, so they'd like to have it all in one place, okay?
So, the final, I think, point that I, I feel that there is no consensus on is that we were asked to make an agreement to not come forward, to ask for any modifications for three years. And, I mean, I'm only speaking for myself. I, I know we cannot, as a school committee, bind a future school committee or tie their hands with respect to a vote. So, that, that's, that's an issue. I just wanna clarify, just back to the, the usage, the public, the PA. Currently, we have, just to sort of educate everybody in the audience, we're able to use it two nights a week, plus three Friday nights for an entire season. So, for the fall, that would amount to 21 nights that we could use the public announcement. Similarly, for the spring. What we are seeking is currently three night games per varsity sport per season. So, that would be 12 games in the fall and six in the spring. So, I, I know I've heard some comments that we're, we're seeking to expand our usage of public and the PA system. And in fact, we are reducing the amount that we're seeking. We're just looking for some flexibility for Margaret in order to do that. So, I thought that was, just wanted to clarify that point.
Carol, have a question or not? So, I wanted to ask Margaret. So, currently now, during the day games, which are, what, 3:30?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. You've been using the PA for field hockey?
Yes.
Soccer, lacrosse?
Correct.
For announcing scores and-
Correct.
The national anthem.
Right.
So, you've been doing all of that on the four o'clock?
We have. You know, we, we don't always do lineups at four o'clock because sometimes there might be two people in the stands. So, you know, it's, it's kind of, you know, if it's appropriate.
Yeah, okay.
And we don't always do the anthem, as I explained at the last meeting. We've discovered that our facility is tight with other, other activities going on. And we have, happened to have a track meet going on when we were playing the anthem for a girls' lacrosse game and the kids are in the middle of a race and they're, they're, didn't know what to do. They're, you know, the anthem started and, and so then all the track kids started turning around. So, you know, when it's appropriate, we do that.
And that would be your intent moving forward? You would-
Absolutely.
Still do the four o'clock games for the PA as-
Yes.
Appropriate.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm, that, from, from my perspective, that's sort of a, a summary. I don't know if anybody else on the committee has anything to add?
I just made a comment. I mean, it seems like the, the largest discrepancy at this point seems to be the distinction between night and day use and what the intent was of the original policy that was adopted. I know that ADHOC worked on that extensively. Tim Schreier is here. He chaired ADHOC. I know Wallace is here. She was on that committee. Bill Crean is here. He was on that committee. Ed, you know, Andy, you were, you know, there are a lot of people in the room, Carol, a lot of people in the room who were involved in that. And then, it came to the school committee and it was finalized, adopted as a policy in January of 2013. And then it was revised somewhat by the planning board. And I think that, you know, there might be some people in the room who were involved in ADHOC, particularly Tim, who could speak to the intent and the discussions that went into the distinction between day and night use and what the concern was. Carol just read the passage right out of the planning board decision, which clearly indicated that the, the residents and the neighbors in particular were concerned about the nighttime use being introduced because that was not a norm in the past. Not as much concern about daytime, if at all. I don't know. But there might be folks here who, who might be able to speak to that. Cause I think since the last meeting in May, there's arisen kind of a heightened lack of agreement on that particular issue, which I think is a concern. Because I think Margaret has, as she just said, been doing it during the day and is gonna continue to use it during the day regardless. I think that makes sense.
So, Carol and Liza, when we go in front of the planning board, we don't have to have everything accepted holistically. We can go piece by piece. So, before we bring in other people about the PA, should we work our way down through the agreements on the time on the lights so that we can at least get some resolution moving forward on that? Or do, or-
My feeling is that we have people here who are involved and why not have-
Okay.
Sort of the testimony and then look at it because they may provide some information that might be pertinent as we go through this piece by piece.
Does anybody wanna speak? Is there anyone who wanted to speak from the audience? Sure.
Jack Diamond, 41 Woodlock Road, also Hingham High School field hockey booster parent. I'm just a little confused with the process. I mean, I was here at the last meeting. We spent four hours. Carol, we had a great meeting. We went through every item, item by item. She never moved from an item until there appeared to be some consensus from all the parties. And there was, you know, various groups of opposition, whether it was the Meadows, Downing, Union Street. There were various groups of, in support of the fields, different athletic groups in support of Margaret. And every item we went through in a four-hour discussion was, reached some sort of consensus. And again, you would not even move from the item, Carol, until it was agreed upon language as to how it should be presented. So, I'm just wondering now why we're, seem to be back addressing sort of the same points that we spent four hours agreeing on. I think you indicated there was some opposition. Is this opposition from folks who were here at the last meeting and have sort of changed their mind? Or is it new opposition?
So, when I, I sent, I had, we started with a memo, which had each of the issues. I circulated it after the meeting to say, this is what we agreed to, this is what we didn't agree to, we're going to withdraw this, and sent it to the working group, which included two people from Downing Street, one from Pleasant, one from Union, one from Fountain Blue, and one from the Meadows. Dr. Gallo, Margaret Conity, and myself. And when I sent it around, what I received back from people was that, no, you don't really have that right. We never agreed to- Dr. Gallo, Margaret Conaty, and myself. And when I sent it around, what I received back from people was that, no, you don't really have that right. We never agreed to the three night. We, we, we think we should have a five-day limit, which includes use during the day during a game at four o'clock or night. So that would, while we did agree to a maximum of three night games, that would then say Margaret could only use her P.A. system for two afternoon games, which maybe some weeks it will turn out to be two. By the other weeks, it might turn out to be four. And the whole point of this exercise was to give her some flexibility for her scheduling. And we are, she's been using the sound already during the day. And going back to the original planning board decision, that the focus was never on daytime use. It was only on nighttime use because people were concerned about young children going to sleep at night and being kept up by the P.A. system.
And correct me if I'm wrong, has there, there's never been any kind of regulation or bylaw that restricts the use of the P.A. system during, during the daytime hours? And they've always used it to announce any games or events that have been there?
You know, interesting you should say that. No, but we recently had a sound bylaw. And that actually allows demolition, construction all during the day. So, I'm not saying, and it doesn't apply to us, but I'm just saying that if you're making the argument that you can demolish something and construct and have landscaping services making noise during the day, that certainly is much more burdensome than 11-minute total sound for a field hockey game or 25 minutes for a lacrosse game.
Sure. So is, is the issue sort of the opposing groups looking to limit the total number of amplified sound usages to include-
Daytime.
-daytime?
Correct.
When what we discussed on the last time was purely nighttime uses?
That would be correct.
And that was, what we agreed upon was all nighttime uses, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just need to clarify that. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak? I guess you want to speak, Tim?
Why not? Hi, Tim Shoyer, 17 Gress Farm Road. I chaired the ADHOC committee. So I haven't been involved in the most recent conversations, but I can at least give you just a very quick, you know, background on, you know, the usage policy was clearly the big issue. It was something that we, we dealt with, the field position and, and all the other various items prior to doing that, which we needed to do. And then the sound actually was the key issue. But the sound was represented as being, you know, sound that would keep, the P.A. that would keep people up in, in the evening was what, was what my, my recog, my recollection was. In trying to develop the usage policy, it was interesting. We went out and we tried to find other towns that had usage policies. And I think the reality was the school districts and the individual high schools sort of dictated what they, you know, what they wanted to do. And so there wasn't like, you know, written policies that you could, that you'd go find. I think Margaret, in her attempt to be as user-friendly as possible, really focused on what the average time of a game would be. So to be able to extend the times, I think is just, you know, standard deviation around a mean is, is the issue, is the issue that we ran, that we ran into there. And I think that, you know, at the end of the day, I would be fully supportive of the changes that were being represented. And the idea of, I agree with Carol, the idea of, you know, locking down a policy for a period of time, you know, I don't think, I don't think makes a lot of sense. Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's my, that's my, that's my two cents.
Carol Falvey, I was chair of school committee during this whole discussion. And I just want to make sure everybody understands, daytime use of the P.A. was never an issue. It was always nighttime use. And it was always nighttime use of the P.A. and the lights. And so I think, I think daytime use of P.A. should just come off the discussion. Shouldn't even be discussed. And you cannot lock yourselves in and promise to make no changes for the next three years.
Yes, in the back? Hello, my name's Ben Hockes. I live at 34 Downing Street. If you're standing at the fields and look behind you, I'm the White House that tries to keep their blinds closed. And if I don't, I apologize, but we do our best. So I wasn't on the ADHOC committee. I moved to town two years ago. So I can't speak to exactly what was said. Was provided with several of the approved minutes and notes from the ADHOC committee meetings going back to 2002, early 2002. And we're happy to pass those around, but it explicitly states that the discussion was around two games every week. So I think as a Downing Street resident, what we're trying to wrap our heads around is really what's happening now. And then really what, in totality, all the pieces of the proposed changes represent to us. So right now, as Margaret has, has mentioned at previous meetings, the daytime amplified noise is used very, very rarely. And so I think one of the concerns and why the ultimate request for a total number in a given week was presented, was the possibility, and again, that's where we're coming from, is the possibility of putting all this together and what's the maximum usage that this allows? What, what does that mean for our neighborhood? So intent or whatever, the possibility now is, starting at four, we have amplified noise five days a week. And then three of those nights, we have amplified noise, you know, until well into the evening. Ultimately, that's four to five hours of amplified noise. And you can condense it down and say, well, it's combined, it's only, you know, 11 minutes or five minutes or whatever it ultimately is. But it's, it's loud and it's, it's, you know, burdensome, especially with little kids. And so that, that's the position that we're coming from, is to try to really understand what's going on. So that, that's the, that was, and we discussed that at, at the meeting, you know, three, four, two weeks ago, whenever it was. So that's a little bit of background for those that, that weren't here. And then I, I don't think there was so much as an opposition to the, to the document that you sent around, Carol. It was, it was more just trying to make it pretty, as black and white as, as possible. I think the, the issue is just the vagaries that are involved in this document. I'm very sympathetic to Margaret and, and her need to have flexibility. And, and honestly, as we said many times before, that I think Margaret's done a great job and been very respectful to how she uses the field and how the field's used to the surrounding neighborhoods. And we're very appreciative of that. But if it's not Margaret, you know, what, what position are we in? Then finally, I think it was misrepresented on the three-year issue. I think what, what we're, as a neighborhood, trying to prevent is, you know, year after year, coming back and, and just nipping away at a little increase here and a little increase there and a little increase here, year after year after year. This is a long process. It's nights away from our families. We stay here until 11 o'clock or whenever it was. 12 o'clock the last time we were here. That's brutal. And so I think what we were trying to portray is we'd like some sort of moratorium on expanding the use. We understand that there's going to be some, some issues as this continues to evolve and on how this is implemented, which is what the two meetings a year suggestion was. But we're trying to prevent from just continually, you know, having this brought back up and just, just nipping away. If we don't get it this year, who cares? We'll get it next year and we'll just keep, keep beating them down. So that was the intent behind that, was let's, let's put a moratorium on, on expanding the usage. Right now, the, the teams under what is generally put here are getting what Margaret says is, is fair. So that's, that's all I have to say.
I think, I think a lot of this stems from, I think it's unfortunate and I wish it weren't the case, but, and it goes back a number of years when we started working on this. There's a lack of trust. There's a lack of trust of these seven elected officials and the school administration in our ability to operate and manage this property and its facilities. And I think that's unfortunate because I think that we've proven through not only constructing the new facilities, but maintaining them and operating them now for a year and a half or more, that we are trustworthy. You know, in the process, and I remember meeting with Ben soon after he moved to town on a Saturday morning at eight o'clock and talking about the replacement of his fence and other things and the plantings that would go. And we spent tens and tens and perhaps almost $100,000 on plantings in that buffer area. And that was because we wanted to make sure that the neighborhood was comfortable with what we were trying to accomplish. And what we were trying to accomplish, which started back in 2012, which was a long time in coming, which was improving our athletic facilities to become worthy of our championship caliber athletes. And they simply weren't. And we started with the track and the tennis courts and we moved on from there. And it was a Herculean effort. And the folks in this room and those in the neighborhood deserve a great deal of credit for participating in that process, for coming to the long meetings, for meeting with us on Saturday mornings, for, you know, helping to create and craft the initial policy that then got adapted by, by the planning board. You know, the, the thing is that we are worthy of trust. And the reason why we're, we're talking about modifications now is because in the decision, there was a lookback required by the planning board. We had that lookback meeting. And as part of that process and looking at how things have gone in terms of operation, Margaret and her coaches throughout over a year of use came up with some, some requests, as did some members of the, of the, of the public who use the property. And said, you know what? We've learned this. We need to change this. We also learned that there's some unintended, perhaps unintended consequences of the planning board process were, you know, some, some changes to the policy, which, you know, really shouldn't have been made. So in the context of that discussion with the folks that use this facility, it became clear that a request for some minor modifications, and we're talking about really a few items, were appropriate. And that's what we're discussing here. You know, I'm not suggesting that we would come back or want to come back any year and do this again. God, no. Okay? Really. The time that we have put into this is unbelievable. And if you think I want to spend one more minute on this, you're crazy. Okay? I just want to enjoy it. I want our kids to enjoy it. I want everyone in this room to enjoy it. The neighbors not to be bothered by it, but to also enjoy it. Ben to come through the gate and Charlie Barnard to come through the gate and come to a game and enjoy the facility. Enjoy that what taxpayers spent and invested in. Okay? Enjoy the over a million dollars that folks in this town donated to this project. The idea is not to keep coming back to tweak it and change it. We've put some time into using it. We've discovered some minor modifications that seem appropriate. We're talking 30 minutes here, 30 minutes there, 30 minutes there. And to me, it seems reasonable.
Adele. Adele, please.
Hi, I'm Adele Shering, 84th and Patchway, in the Meadows. I'd just like to address the MIAA tournament games. Just so you know, this, these games that we're talking about do not involve Hingham teams. These are teams that, these are games that we are offering to host for neutral sites for other teams. So it could be Marshfield and Hanover playing or Sitchwick and Pembroke playing. And here we are fighting about every night game that Hingham has, and yet we're kind of giving you a carte blanche for these MIAA tournament games. Even though we're willing to do it as a courtesy, I really think that the first year that we're trying this, to limit it to one day slash night per season. If that's two games, one, four to six, six to eight, I think that's fine, but at least just one game and just to try it and see how, how it works out. We don't know what they're going to be using for amplified sound and we don't know how much it will impact us. But I just would like to limit that, at least the first year, to try it to one day slash night.
Well, they would be using, just to clarify, they would be using our sound system, which has the governor on it. So they're not bringing in their own sound.
Right, right.
They would be using what we-
But I just don't know how much of amplified sound during the game they might use. So I, as I said, I'd just like to try it for one day slash night per season.
Per season.
See how it goes.
I think that's reasonable.
Thank you.
A woman on here? You hit. Chris.
Hi, my name is Chris Kay. I am a lifelong president of Hingham, class of 89. And I, all of my children have been involved in the athletics, including currently a dance team member. I just, and I'm sorry, I'm new to this discussion. Wondering about clarification for the, of course, the dance team is sort of under the umbrella with the football team, but our eight minutes, what's, it's usually, for those of you who don't know, you know, well, the primary efforts of the dance team is to perform, for the fall dance team is to perform at these football games. They're showcased at the halftime. It's under three minutes of song that they dance to. There is, and then there's two sideline dances that are under a minute each. If the opposing team has a cheer or dance team, they also will dance the three minutes to amplify, amplified sound at halftime. Other than that, they're not cheerleaders. There's no vocal component to their performances. And I'm just wondering, you know, how that will affect if there's three, am I, to understand, there's three night games scheduled. So they, you know, that's less than last year. Has that been-
The issue was, is that it was put in just for football. And when, during this lookback period, we're trying to be gender neutral. So saying that only the dance team can, can dance at a football game is very gender specific.
Right.
So we're, we were trying to open it up that if the dance team, or if another team wanted to have the dance team come and dance at a soccer game, that they would have that opportunity to do that. I mean, that was, I think, the request that Margaret made. So that we would, but that would, we, that would involve adding a few games, or at least have an even number of games, so that if you did three at a football game, you might have three at girls field hockey or soccer. I don't know if that would ever come up. But in our effort to not revisit this every year, we're trying to put some language in that allows for the dance team to perform for other teams besides football. Because it just, it smacks a little bit of a, of a Title IX issue to us, to have it just restricted to football. So that was, I think, the basis. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Margaret, but-
It was. And, you know, it's important to understand-
That was the basis. And it's important to understand that the dance team, while they practice all during the week and, and have, they get to perform at three games, you know, they bring a special spirit. And I think that, you know, if a soccer team, you know, was having a game and, you know, wanted the dance team to perform, I, I think that, you know, it's, it's, it's special. And that's, we just don't hate to be restricted to say, well, no, you can only do it for football. You know, because then you, that brings, that brings, well, you know, the soccer team-
know, the soccer team, what's wrong with us? You know, that kind of a, an attitude, so.
I think a suggestion has been made by one of the neighbors in response to this issue that, well, by removing the word football from the Friday night game opportunities and making it gender neutral for Title IX purposes, um, that you could have the dance team perform at any game that chooses to play on the Friday night. But isn't it true that we discussed the fact that nobody else plays on a Friday night and certainly wouldn't be playing until ten o'clock?
No, no one would be, ever be playing until ten o'clock. Would, would I have a Friday night game? Yeah, I can tell you right now, on October second, I have, uh, a girls' and boys' double header soccer game.
Starting at?
Four and then six.
So over by?
Before eight.
Okay.
So that.
So not ten P.M.?
No, there would be no, nothing like that. And if it were halftime, we're talking six forty.
Right, right. So dinnertime, really?
Yeah. So that's, you know, that's what prompted, you know, to, to have the dance team to be able to, um, perform at, right, different.
Thank you.
Events.
So Margaret.
Yes.
Do they have like a state championship or competition?
They have competitions, yes.
So basically, every time they perform, that's almost like their own exhibition, getting ready for a tournament or a competition.
They are, yep.
Don't they go and perform at the Orange Bowl on New Year's Eve?
They do, uh.
Around New Year's?
Yeah, the Orange Bowl or some other bowl, but every other year.
Right.
You know, and, uh.
Right.
Yep. And, uh.
Bill, did you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry. Are you?
Let me just finish about the dance team, you know. I, I feel like they are as much a team as any other team. And so to be able to perform in front of our community, I think is, um, important that, uh, only three times a ye- during the fall is just, it's just not enough. So for the amount of time they put in, right, so, okay.
Bill Crean wanted to say something.
Bill Crean, Tenet Walker Court. Um, by background, I served on the ad hoc committee, uh, that Tim chaired, and I also am a current member of Hingham Sports Partnership. Um, just in terms of, uh, perspective of the project, I'd like to just take us back to the benefits of this project that are unrelated to sports and just, um, I think, uh, very beneficial to the neighborhood in terms of the parking lot, uh, the curbing on Union Street, um, uh, you know, I was, I was pleased to be at graduation and the fact that, um, you can hold graduation out there and, and have unlimited attendance, um, you know, for SATs or drama, you have the extra parking. Um, you know, it's not just sports that this project, uh, benefits. And, um, I know it's a lot for all of us neighbors and supporters to come here to these meetings, but this is democracy and this is it in its finest form. And sometimes it's messy, but I'm proud that during that and now, um, people have strong feelings, but I think everybody is respectful of one another. Um, but I'd also like to point out that, um, a lot of people here in this town, over one point one million dollars was raised from private funds. And I can only imagine the countless hours beyond all the meetings that those people did as a service to this community to be able to give us that, uh, that field and to be able, the benefits of the neighbors in terms of the mitigation. And it was the right thing to do. I'm not saying it was absolutely the right thing to do, and we were mindful of that in terms of all the new fencing, the plantings, um, the parking lot, all those things that were required of this project that required private citizens to raise over a million dollars. So I just want to point that out, um, you know, the benefits of the project. And I think we were very good neighbors. And I was on that committee. We were extremely conservative when we put together the parameters because it was a lot for the neighborhood to absorb. And people didn't know exactly, Margaret couldn't know exactly how that was going to work. And we took a conservative approach to be neighborly. Um, we, it's been talked about as nauseam, how, you know, I think that the, the points that we're trying to do, but I just want to put this in perspective. Um, the total use of evening games is twenty times per year. Uh, twelve, uh, in the fall for Hingham High School games, two Hingham youth football games, spring, six Hingham games. Uh, twenty games per year is five, five point five percent of the year, one point six, seven times per month, one point five, six times per week during the fall season, and point six, seven times per week during the spring season. And again, we've talked about the fact that can it occasionally in a perfect storm have a lot in one week? Absolutely. And that's why we're here to give Margaret that flexibility. But that doesn't mean that there's extra being added later on. And, um, and again, I, I just, I want to point out in the scheme of things, and I can't quantify this tonight, but I would venture to guess that we have the most restrictive use policy in the entire state. And I'm not saying that we should look at that in a negative way. I think it's a positive way that the people of this community are supportive of one another and are appreciative, um, of this, of this field and are being mindful of the neighbors. But I think what's being asked about is more than reasonable. And if you look at it in the context of the history of this project and the amount of meetings that have been had over the years to even get to the field of where it is. And it was overwhelmingly decided by the community that the field should be at the high school. So that was, you know, and I, and I don't need to go back and I've only been in town for twelve years, so that doesn't, I don't know what it takes for me to be considered a Hingamite and, um, but my kids someday will be able to say that proudly. But, um, but again, I'm sorry if I talked too long tonight, but I think I would like to just bring some perspective to this discussion. And I personally want to thank a lot of people in this room because the thing that I am most appreciative of is some of the people that worked the hardest on this project and for the middle school and all the other things are people that their kids never benefited. And I and my family and a lot of my friends are the recipient of this wonderful gift. And that's why I'm here night after night, um, because I am so proud of it and supportive of it. And a lot of other people here will be at meetings every night of the week till eleven o'clock at night because it's too important to not take full advantage of this field and the impact it has on parents, grandparents, children and everybody. And, um, you know, and so thank you for the opportunity and, um, you know, again, thank you to many people in this room that not only donated money, but were tireless in their effort and completely unselfish, so thank you.
I was going to make some of the points that Bill Crean has made. I'm glad that you made that. I'd really like to mention two things and, and when I say mention two things, I mean to all of the people who were involved in making these, uh, tough decisions, um, particularly in this room tonight. Um, I'm, I'm glad actually that Ray mentioned the word trust because that's really the heart of all of this, that we both need to be trusting of one another. We need to trust that people are coming to us with their honest concerns and that, that we need to listen to them. I think we've done that. Um, the, the people who are opposed to changes need to be trustful that, um, we are working very, very hard to regain trust. Have there been incidents in the past? And when I say the past, I've been involved in this issue, back to the old field and occasional trips to the zoning board of appeals, to the planning board. Then I was involved when the, we had the, um, the, the field committee that was working so hard going again. And then when the final, uh, decisions were being made by the planning board, going back again. And now, uh, in this series, which by my count, this is the fifth meeting, third school committee meeting and two planning board meetings that we've been on this issue. So, uh, so we all have to be a little more forgiving of our attitudes about the other side. Um, have there been glitches in the past? Absolutely. Will there probably be some in the future? Absolutely. Mistakes happen. Poor judgments happen on occasion, but we've got to get beyond individual incidents and develop some trust on both sides. So, so that's it on trust. The other thing I want to talk about is consensus. In a lot of the professional work I do, both in Hingham and, and beyond and professional organizations and, and some that are associated with education, we use a consensus model for making decisions. In a consensus model for making decisions, not every person gets every word that they would like to see in the document. But consensus means to me that everybody who has an interest in participating or speaking on either side gets to have his or her say. Every individual also gets to hear what the other side has to say. And then decisions are made not based upon, you got three points, I got five points, you didn't put in my wording on whatever the item may be. And this, this works both ways. We can never get very far if we can't come to consensus on some of the big ideas, uncertainly on the things that everybody seemed to agree on, on one date and then perhaps didn't agree on at another time. Consensus really needs to be how we function on all things. Now, remind the school committee of that, that I think that's how we should make decisions more often. Consensus rather than simply counting, uh, counting votes. There's sometimes when you need to count for legal matters and so on, but, but let's try to think of this as, as an opportunity to build trust, to restore it where it's perhaps lapsed at times and to make changes that give us the flexibility, trusting that we are not going to abuse those. And I think that all of the things that Bill mentioned that were part of this project shows that we are very much trying to do that. All the time we spend on this shows us, it shows everyone that we are very much trying to do that. So, um, I, I, I don't have a personal stake in this, you know, I don't have children who play. I don't have a vote, actually. I can only give you some thoughts about how we might proceed in a way that's going to get us somewhere. Because my fear is if we're going to wait until everybody agrees on every word that's in the document, we're not going anywhere. We're not going anywhere tonight. We won't go anywhere at the planning board meeting. And quite honestly, I don't think that we'll be, ever be able to come to a decision if the want is that every individual has to be satisfied with every word. And, and again, that's on both sides. So, um, that's really all I wanted to say. Trust, build it, keep it, work on it, both sides, and, um, come to consensus. Decision-making by consensus is the best way for everyone. And what it says if you come for, with consensus, that while a decision may not be exactly the way you would have preferred it to be, it is a decision that you can accept and move forward as a unit.
Can I make a proposal trying to get us to consensus? Um, I, I think of the items that Carol outlined of the non-consensus, um, I, I feel more comfortable about the daytime use after what I asked Margaret and that it hasn't been, um, constant and that I, I wanted to ask that question because I had that in my mind. So I would trust her of working towards that and not trying to expand it too much. Um, I'd like to see us consider, you know, we said not, we don't want to hold ourselves to three years, but agreeing to look at this again in a year and understanding what the impact of counting the nighttime uses of the three times per varsity games as we had talked about. And then the MIAA tournament, trying to be, you know, one day, might be two games on that one day, but we'll see what the MIAA comes back with us, to us with.
There's, there's no saying they want to come to us.
Yeah, yeah. So.
I mean, this could be all or nothing.
Um, but I think in fairness, you know, we've had the policy in place that once this usage policy was in place, that's, that's really, for me, that's the point zero. Since that time, that's what the neighbors have been living with. That's what our teams have been playing under. That's what we know for the use of this field. And so it's only been a year and a half and we only got so much experience, everyone did, of how we're using it. So if we take one more year to, you know, make these modifications and look at it again with the intent of not expanding it again, but tweaking it to our understanding and respecting that the neighbors have to live with it. I know in my neighborhood, I have planes flying over my head and, you know, we're all dealing with different types of noise. So I think if we can also respect what the neighbors are going through, um, that would be my proposal in moving ahead. Because I think we're down to some very small number of issues of what we need to come to consensus agreement on. And, uh, you know, it's still a little new, yeah.
When you said flies on the MIAA, Adele has said one day.
Per season, is that what you're proposing? Yeah, but if it happened to be two games on that one day, as Margaret said, you know, she felt comfortable, I feel comfortable with that. We've never done it before. We, we have no idea. But I'd like to be, I personally would like to be a host, so, um.
And I do think it's important to still have those two meetings rather than wait a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Still have the two meetings, the end of fall and spring, to get that feedback in real time with the group of people.
Right. So I guess I'm not clear on, based on that, what the lack of consensus would then be. Um, also, I'm not convinced that regardless of whether there is consensus, to the extent that there's even one neighbor who still has concerns over what we feel there's consensus about, that the planning board will, you know, side with that one particular neighbor because that has happened in the past. I'm not suggesting that that one neighbor's concerns are not valid, um, or to be considered. Um, but again, we're talking about a limited number of people and a whole community. The other thing I would suggest is, I don't know if I'm going to be on this committee next year. I may, I may not. I, kicking the can down the road and revisiting this and going through this again and having more of these discussions, I don't know if that's a productive use of our time. Um, it, it seems to me, based on what we've talked about, thirty minutes for practice for lights, thirty minutes for sound, limited to a number of games per season that we've already talked about, having the afternoon and evening issue not be an issue. And the MIAA issue that you just talked about, which I think is perhaps the least of the items, it doesn't seem to be that there's a lack of consensus anymore unless I'm missing something.
Well, I, I don't, I don't see any reason for not having a conversation in a year. I mean, I know the neighbors don't want to and we don't want to, but maybe in terms of the informal meetings, you know, we leave it to that. And if they want to come back and say, let's have a, let's have a hearing or let's have a meeting, a big meeting, maybe we can allow it to that process. But, um, I, I'm not opposed to that particular element.
In following Dot's fear here, um, I just think I'm very acceptable, especially with the neighbors, um, you know, your houses are closer to my office than my principal's offices to my office. I, you know, we've got that little gate there. As a matter of fact, I wanted to talk to one of your yards for graduation. Get away the other day, but, uh. I, I mean, I, I just feel that it's something that, you know, if there's something that's not working, working to come on over, give me a call, we'll talk it through, okay, what has to happen here to make it work? I mean, I think that's, that's the way neighbors work. And, um, and so rather than bringing everybody together, let's, I, I would propose that let's have this conversation and, and then if there is, we couldn't, we couldn't, um, agree on it, then okay, we'll bring the artillery, no, we'll bring everybody, we'll bring some, you know, other people together. But I, you know, and, and a lot, you know, I've heard you say, oh, well, you know, uh, well, Margaret's doing this and that. It, 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 it's not me and it would be any person who's in my position. And if, 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 uh, it's not going well, well, we all have bosses, um, that you can speak to as well. So, I mean, I think, um, you know, the easiest thing is let's, you know. So, I mean, I think, you know, the easiest thing is, let's, you know, let's have a conversation if something isn't working out well, and go from there. That would be my suggestion.
I'm sorry, I guess one of the reasons I brought up was because for some of the feedback we've gotten was that the neighbors thought this usage policy was it, it wasn't gonna, it might be a look back, but they didn't anticipate the changes. And whatever their interpretation of the changes were, to me, they felt like this was more. And so, then if we say, okay, we're never going to talk about it again, I'd rather them feel comfortable that we are amenable to having the conversations as Carol outlined. I think that that provides their input and that it's not just set in stone and, you know, we're the only ones that could propose a change. So, that's, that's why, yeah, I'm thinking of what they said and trying to come to the middle ground of keeping everyone in the conversation and getting used to it, and this is a change of how their neighborhood operates. And a year and a half is not that long of a period of time, so, especially when you're living in your house for, I'm assuming, you know, much longer than that. So, that's where I'm just trying to keep the door open a little bit.
Bill, I think, I think continuing discussion as Carol has suggested and Margaret just suggested, I think is a good idea. The only thing I think doesn't make any sense is deferring any decisions and having this process occur again in a year.
I don't, I don't think we have, okay, next year, we're having this discussion again. No, we don't need to have it, we won't have it.
Because I think the policy that we adopted that was, for the most part, incorporated into the planning board decision, does provide for future kind of look backs by this committee to see how things are working. There's no suggestion about modifications. As I said earlier, the opportunity for the modifications, based on the feedback from Margaret and the coaches and the community, was really prompted in the context of the initial look back. I wouldn't imagine that that would happen again.
So, could I make a suggestion?
Actually, I think Carol's probably about to address what I was going to ask.
So, the memo that I have dated May 25th, Usage Modification Working Group, where it's in black and red with what we've agreed to, I think is, I think what I'm hearing is that we are all in agreement with a few, I guess, a few additions on the MIAA, under the asterisk, asterisk notes, item one, we would say one day per season, it would be limited to a tournament, which could include two games. And under the two audio sections, that there would be no restriction of daytime use. I think that's what we are, we have evolved to as an addition. Cynthia, is that what you were going to say?
Sort of. I guess my question is, what's our next step? I believe we're supposed to go before the planning board next Monday, and I believe we need to vote on something to bring to them next Monday.
Yeah.
I am not comfortable with voting on something that's been modified on the fly. I'd rather have something I can look at and say, yes, I'll vote on that. So, I just, my question is, what's the next step?
So, that's why I'm saying if you look at the May 25th memo, which is one of the memos that I forwarded to you. My sense is that, the only modification is that under the fall season amplified sound, we would be saying that there's no restriction of daytime use because it's not clear, apparently. And we would say, we would add that same statement under the spring amplified sound.
Well, I guess my point is, and this is, this may be semantics, but Exhibit B, which is from way back when, which is the schedule, the actual usage policy, is there any way we could officially modify that and then vote on that so that that's what we're bringing to the planning board? I think their point in asking us to come with something to them was so that they don't have to do a lot of work.
And also, they want us to come along, as I recall, the chair saying, a lot of clarity because none of us are going to be around in ten years.
Yeah, well, I think the arm in arm isn't a problem. Sounds like there's a lot of consensus, you know, in the room.
That document is exactly what we had been working with until the last iteration, but it can certainly be converted back to that format, because that's the format that it's been in.
Right, that's just what I'm asking. Can we convert it back to this format is my point? And then vote on it or do whatever we need to do on it.
What do you get down with that?
I think it's actually, we have till Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's Thursday. I think they've heard Wednesday, but.
It is Thursday, so Wednesday obviously is there.
And if we're going for one hundred percent clarity, I know it was discussed, but it isn't actually stated anywhere, should we, maybe it is and I don't know it, should we actually add in that homecoming is completely exempt for many and all of these?
That would be a deep comment.
Use, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I think so.
Well, you bring up a good point because that's when we were counting the games and then so that it was not counted or anything.
I think, does somebody have a question, Andy?
Yes, sure. Well, I think let's focus, continue on Hingham High School here because the youth sports is a different, there's a lot of documents we've received from neighbors about youth sports, so let us, and just to be clear on that, yes, we are the stewards of the fields, the owner of the fields. One of our priorities, or at least for me, is Margaret would like to have, for her scheduling, she would like to have us have the ability to practice till nine o'clock. So, that is something that's more of urgent nature to us because we have to make sure we can run all our programs right away, so that's why we're still on this note here.
Point of information is on May 25th, and I don't know how many episodes have been elevated. It's not on the website, I do have some copies here.
Karen?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. I think, you know, going to Cynthia's point, it might be very difficult to vote with all these drafts, but I do think we have some pretty good consensus that people are receptive to nine o'clock for the lights, that people are receptive to removing the word on just football, receptive to modification of sound for our high school teams. The only one thing I didn't really know, haven't heard anything back on, we did get the, we talked about the usage for the dance team, and then we received the, one of the neighbors had written, well, you don't need it if it's, if you take the word football out, but I haven't heard whether that's an issue or not, I mean, if it is for our dance team.
I think we had a dance team speak to that, and Margaret spoke to it, and then I spoke to that comment specifically.
Right, but I think, but the people who wrote one of the emails that we received.
Well, is it a problem for the school committee?
Oh, good, yeah.
This is sort of our.
My point was, I asked Margaret specifically questions because that comment was geared towards, well, if you take the word football out, then you can have it three Friday nights until ten, and if you want to schedule soccer instead of football, you're free to do that. And my point in asking Margaret that question was that no other sport other than football plays that late. If they're going to play, they're going to start at four and six and be over before eight, and, you know.
That's when she said the halftime would be at six forty.
Right, and discussed the need to have opportunities for other sports besides just football, because those other sports generally wouldn't play on a Friday night except earlier, plus the fact that the dance team is a varsity sport and not just a bunch of girls kicking at halftime.
So, Carol, on this, where is the, so is the dance team then considered under these three night games per varsity sport per season? They would fall under those half times of those?
We had added four games. So, if you look under conditions of allowed use by Hingham High School, second page, item two.
That was a consensus the night of the meeting.
Correct.
And then questions arose after that.
So, we had agreed to add goal announcing and a maximum of four halftime activities to non-football Hingham High School teams per season.
Right.
Not to say that that is actually would be utilized, but.
I thought it was four, and that football wasn't mentioned, and that the reason that we were making this modification was title nine, so the reason is that we need more exposure and more activities.
Right.
I think that that's a different consideration than solving the title nine, so I'm not opposing it or anything, just giving.
So, I would defer to, my understanding is that we were adding four to the three, but I could be mistaken, I don't know how, what anybody else's understanding is.
I.
Oh, come on.
Well, on that note, the number four was discussed at your meeting for that.
I remember it was late when we were on that topic, so I.
So, Andy, what are you saying, that it was four or we added four?
That I thought it was, that's the way you have it written here, four halftime activities to non-football.
To non-football, Hingham High School teams.
Right, so.
But I, my intention in writing four to non-football was four plus the football.
That's what I thought.
Four to non-football, and there are three footballs.
That's what I thought.
Okay. So, that would be a potential of seven.
Yeah, will they actually happen? The likelihood is pretty low that the varsity soccer or field hockey would actually want to have the dance team perform.
Yeah, I actually took minutes that night.
Excuse me, Ben, Ben, we, sorry, yeah.
In his notes, I actually did take minutes that night, and it did talk about the fact that player introductions and goals announcing already exist. Halftime activities has to stay for title nine, but limits, so limited women's teams will be provided equal opportunity to have halftime activities and capped at four.
Capped at four, overall.
That's what I had.
That was, yeah, that's not my recollection, but. Yeah, I mean, my only concern is if they are going to do three football games for a boys' team, then you have to have the opportunity.
No, let me clarify.
Okay. Reading my own scribbling. Be provided equal opportunity to have halftime activities as male teams with male and female each capped at four, so it would have been eight.
Eight, oh, okay.
And that actually makes sense because we talked about the football, we also said, what about the men's soccer? And then when we're thinking fall, there's the field hockey team and the women's soccer team. And actually, if we're talking about the day and night distinction, right, if you're going to have a soccer game at four o'clock and say the dance team actually was going to perform at halftime, which might be, what, four forty?
Right.
Okay, then that wouldn't count because that's an afternoon, it's daylight, it's, if anyone's taking a nap, then they're going to not be able to sleep at night, so I think it's, you know.
Can I remind you that in our football season, we have two Friday night games and one Saturday homecoming game? So, the numbers just won't add up to.
But we will also have, once the playoffs are announced, you get other, I mean, we're going to have more than three home games total for football.
Yes, but this is not a part of playoffs.
Okay, got you, got you. Just a new season, new structure.
So, Aileen, you have eight, a total of eight?
The way that I.
I had seven.
Yeah, no, the way that I have it worded would come out, would come out to eight. It's to have halftime activities as male teams with male and female each capped at four.
Can I ask a question of, do we still have dance team representation here? In light of the neighbors' concern about escalating the number and in light of our interest in adding some parity, how many times have you ever performed at any halftime show, or how many would you want to, so that we're not making a, you know, an exorbitant number just to have the maximum possible, but what's a realistic number of times that you would want to perform?
And you go to the, go up here, please. Excuse me, we have to, you have to, you have to identify yourself, you have to identify yourself and.
Again, I'm this guy. I'm Karen. Me personally, zero times I want to perform, but.
You're representing.
Well, those days are over, but the, we, yeah.
I mean, we're scheduled, I mean, Jen, Amy isn't here, she's the coach of the team, but there's a schedule that goes along with the football games. So, whatever the home games are, and a couple, two or three of them are night games, and the afternoon games, they perform at halftime, and like you were saying, there's a couple of halftime, you might hear the speakers, the sideline dances that are very brief, but it's a schedule, we're scheduled at this point with the football team. I'm not saying that in the future, and nobody is, that they couldn't dance with the soccer team. I think actually this year, they've been asked if it might be something they want to do, but, but that's not, that's not happening right at the moment, so it's just a schedule with the football games, so day and, and night games, whatever is scheduled for football.
And two years ago, we did, we traveled with some of the football teams, so now we've been reduced to home games, and, you know, this, again, I don't know if I was clear, but this is, you know, the main part that people join the dance, the kids, both boys and girls, join the dance team.
Right.
Is for these, this opportunity at the football, not, again, that I'm against, they do the basketball during the winter and.
I think most, most of us are here too tonight, I mean, there are some of the dance team parents left already, but we were here just to make sure that we, that the kids weren't going to get shut out.
Right.
And not be able to perform because, as Margaret was saying, they work really hard, they do have private competitions where we represent the school and the town of Hingham, and they also have a competition that involves other, other schools on a state level, so, you know, this is something that's important to them, and we just wanted to make sure that they weren't going to be squeezed out for whatever reasons might involve the system, the amp system or whatever. I mean, they do dance, it's a very brief amount of time. And by the way, I do have a lot of sympathy for somebody who has small children and, you know, they're worried they're going to be woken up at some point, I do understand that, but, but I think that Margaret and everybody else has tried to do as much as they can to schedule and make sure that things are out there ahead of time, so people are aware of when, when things are going to happen. And you know what, I'm not going, I'm going to go off topic just really quick about the MIAA thing. My son graduated in 2007, and all four years that he was at the high school, he played soccer. And I have to tell you, we were hosted, we had no facility for any MIAA, anything to go on in Hingham, and we were hosted absolutely everywhere with open arms. And so, it would be sad for me to think that we wouldn't be able to do that for some other towns because it was awesome, you know, and thank God because we had great teams all those years that we were, that he played at the soccer, at the high school.
Thank you very much, all right. We've been on this for an hour and fifteen minutes, so a little bit longer than we had anticipated. I think there's some pretty good consensus here, pretty much in this framework. I think Cynthia brings up a point where there's a lot of moving parts here, so it's hard to actually take a vote, but I think we have a good enough clarity here to go in front of, in front of the planning board next week. I think the good thing is, for Margaret, the lights till nine o'clock is one of her top priorities, especially she has her meeting Tuesday or Wednesday, and to get the, you know, so if we can get that language clarified with planning board, because they can vote on it that night, hopefully we can go from there.
But we're going to vote on everything, right? We don't want to go back, we don't want to keep dragging people out to meetings, we want to package this up.
No, I think.
We have to stand with them and see a vote. I think we should take Don's words and suggestions.
Excuse me, can you, Carol, I know you.
Yep.
Yep, it's easy. I know we're sitting back here, but got to do it for the TV.
You know, going back to what Dot said earlier, consensus and trust. You've come to consensus, you have an audience here, you need to vote and trust that the document will reflect what was agreed on tonight. You need to vote tonight and get this done and wrapped up. You, you need to vote tonight and get this done and wrapped up.
Do people want to opine in?
I'd like to ask how logistics of next week's meeting are going to go.
Well, the planning board, I will be there, Liza will be there, Carol will be there. Post the meeting, post the meeting. And we're...
So, who's going to lead the discussion with the planning board?
I think Andy should.
Yes, I will. And I'm going to go down this...
Just you?
No.
As the chair?
Yes, I'll be there, but I'm going to have, obviously, with me at the table, both Carol and Liza, since they've both done a lot of work on this. And I would like to go down things in, in terms of priority. And as we just mentioned, the first thing in priority is getting the modification to nine o'clock. And hopefully, we can get them to do a decision and then continue working our way down. That's what I envisioned. Whether reality happens, you know as good as I do.
Submit the whole request. And then it's up to them, I think, to say yes or no or question us about a specific item.
Or whether you just want to hear the whole request and then take your action.
Or we may ask that question.
No, no, we have to submit the whole request, obviously, but, you know, just, but they also did say to us that they could take the whole request and see it in pieces.
I'd also like to suggest that we redo this based on this.
Mm-hmm.
But that we provide the planning board with this because it gives the, the comments of what that we discussed with the neighbors and then, and that we can also provide in a summary. Carol can do a summary of the process of, that you're reaching out to the, I'm sure you even already have that written, but the summary of the neighbors you reached out to and the people that were contacted because I think that would be helpful for the planning board to know. And I don't know if we want to even, we don't have to provide them our meeting minutes, but, um...
I feel a little anxious. I like...
No, I meant that not this meeting, but the one that we had with the neighbors.
I like to suggest that we do vote on this tonight. Is there anything on the memo from Carol on May twenty-fifth? Not so much the format, but the content that we're uncomfortable with? And if not, I would suggest that we vote on...
That a motion?
I would make the motion.
I'll second it.
That we take a vote on Exhibit B, which Carol provided us dated May, twenty-five May, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll second that motion.
So, discussion, I think we're getting discussion. There's also, which one? Exhibit B includes the Downing Street comment or does not include Downing Street comment?
Does not.
Okay.
Red line.
It's a red line copy.
What Carol said.
It also includes language about Hingham Youth Football, which we have not discussed at all.
Correct.
So, I'm not comfortable voting on this document as is.
Why don't we discuss Hingham Youth Football?
So, a couple of items and there wasn't, there didn't seem to be much discussion on that.
I think in pursuit of time, we should move on this and then...
Well, Andy, if I may, so there were two requests from Hingham Youth Football.
Oh, one was the time, yes.
One was agreed to, which was the time change on Sunday, moved from twelve to eleven-thirty on Sunday.
Yep.
That was not a concern.
Correct.
The second was the limited play-by-play. And my understanding is that there was agreement to allow one game per Sunday. So, I assume it would be a rotating basis.
Right.
And that there'd be some explanation of what the limited play-by-play would be, and that could be provided in advance of, of the meeting.
Those are the only two things that we agreed to.
Those are the only two things that were requested.
Well, no, there was another request that we, that there was no agreement on, which was to extend until nine PM on Saturday.
The, the use of, right, and, and I think, if I could, the, that's tied to the play-by-play because the, the point of extending it, the use of amplified sound to nine o'clock was allowing play-by-play to go through the whole game, the sound to go through the whole game. And if you had play-by-play, you would need to go to the end of the game. Three games, Andy, as you know, takes about five hours. So, four o'clock to nine o'clock, and if you have play-by-play in that one game on a Sunday, you would need to go play-by-play till the end of the game. So, that, that was the reason for extending. My understanding is the request to extend from eight to nine to allow for the sound to the end of the game. So, if you're allowing that play-by-play, and, you know, it could be, it could be revised or, or clarified to say in a parenthetical, limited to the one play-by, play-by-play game allowed pursuant to the notes on Exhibit B. You call?
Yeah.
Susan, is this something you wanted to talk about?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, hang on a sec. Susan, come up, but...
And just so you know, I, the notes that I had on that were that the preferences for sound on Sunday, not Saturday night. There was no consensus on play-by-play, but if anything, they, it would only be one of three games on Sunday.
So, no consensus?
There was consensus for Sunday, but not for...
So, they preferred the Sunday versus the Saturday night?
Okay, so, no consensus for Saturday.
They did not want Saturday night.
But there was consensus to have one of three...
One of three games on Sunday.
Okay, and then we do have just, we were received a letter from the Chair of the Meadows Board, and if I read this quickly, they do not care for any play-by-play. Is that correct, Adele? Is she still here?
No.
Yes, all right. So, they would care for none, but that's...
We did ask you that, that you didn't want it on Saturday night, so that's not it. We would like the lights on for nine, more for safe egress. So, we're going to continue to start our games at four when the rest of the league starts at five, and we will not be pursuing, pushing that to five, but it is hard to get them all done by eight. And if it's getting a little bit darker, if those games, night games are a little later in October than earlier, it's a little darker. So, we'd ask that that be extended from eight, it's actually eight thirty to nine.
The lights are already allowed at nine o'clock.
Yes.
On Saturday. The request was only about amplified sound.
Yeah.
So, you don't need to do it because they're already allowed to be on till nine on Saturday.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because I think there were some questions on the lights on to nine, so I just wanted to make sure that's clear with everybody from the comments from the last meeting.
That's not a change.
Yeah, it's not a change, but I just wanted to make sure that, that we still have that lights on for safe egress.
But my understanding is that we did not come to an agreement to extend the amplified sound to nine PM. And I, I know that you may be...
On Saturdays.
On Saturday. So, I'm not sure that was your understanding, but that was certainly...
Yes, that was agreed.
Okay.
Because they had said they'd rather have it on a Sunday.
So, the only, the only two Hingham Youth Football requests is to start at eleven-thirty on Sundays in September, which there seemed to be no discussion about. And the one play-by-play, limited play-by-play, that you will present us a copy of, to the school committee of what you propose for limited play-by-play for one game on a Sunday.
Right, and then Kate asked that a contact be put on the website, so that'll be, I'd said that would be mine, so...
Okay.
I don't know if you can put that in there, but that's, that'll be on there. So, if something happens on that day with the amplified sound, they have a contact.
Okay.
So, I know we'll, we'll talk about that at the bi, you know, the bi-annual meetings, but...
So, those are, those are the only two, um...
And they were also, and the play-by-play, wasn't there notes in there about they were supposed to give us some sort of sample of their play-by-play?
Susan, over to you.
So...
And again, when, I think we want to, you know, not use the word play-by-play because the high school football is play-by-play. This will be limited announcing. So, major plays, I think play-by-play, we agreed that we would have major plays, runs, touchdowns, not, not play-by-play. If there's not anything major going on, there will be, it's, it's not going to be constant like a high school or a professional game.
Limited announcing.
Yeah. So, that, so we're, play-by-play is not in there.
So, it seems, I mean, there seems to be two items that we came to agreement on, and I, I certainly would be in favor of including it in our request.
So, we have a motion on the table. We have a sec.
Can I please have a motion?
So, Dr. Ed Schreier.
Well, Dr. Ed made a motion.
I, I moved that we vote on the proposal dated twenty-five May from Carol that we all have a copy of.
And I seconded it.
With the revisions that we've discussed tonight.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, and we have a second now. Discussion. Cynthia, you brought up a point about the high school fields. Do you, or not the high school, the U-Sports.
We just discussed that.
Yep, and so you're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? You want to come? Ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yay, we have a policy. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm sure you guys want to stay.
Thank you, boy. Good job. This season's close.
Thanks, Sam.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
So, I know, I know we're still on the air.
Three?
Yes, six point three. Six point three, to authorize the Chair to sign a D-E-S-E required letter of assurance that the district will move forward with a full-day kindergarten program for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. Dr. Gallo.
I explained this in the annotated notes, but this is a requirement that's linked to the grant that we have already received. There's a attached letter, a letter on the other side that tells the amount of that grant that we received. I was required to submit a letter of assurance at the time that in fact we would follow the guidelines as to any fee that were to be charged. And in fact, we had our fee approved, so that was out, out of the way. And then the Chair of the school committee is asked to sign a statement of assurance that in fact we got the money, we planned, we are going to move ahead in the fall. So, it's a routine kind of thing.
Do we need a motion and a vote?
We need a motion and a vote. Well, the motion would be to authorize the Chair, as a committee, for you all to authorize Andy to sign this as the Chair, and we would then submit it. Says nothing at all about the next grant opportunity. If in fact there is one, that's all to be determined. This is solely about the grant we've already received.
Can I have a motion? Cynthia.
I would authorize Andy as Chair of the Hingham School Committee to submit the letter as presented to Mary Jane Crowdie from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Do you have a second?
I seconded.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Motion here.
Something on the back.
Okay, six point four, to schedule the summer meeting and annual planning meeting. So, do you want me to go, Dr. Gallo, or do you want that to go?
Well, you can go because you have a new idea there.
Right, so, usually, we meet once in July and once in August. Dr. Gallo has briefed me and Liza on some things that she would like to cover through the next year. And we thought it might be best to, instead of taking one of these times off, continue the meetings and use those basically for Dr. Gallo to roll out some of her ideas and thoughts and also, I mean, her ideas, it's the big picture, things that need to be accomplished so that we can brainstorm those over the summer, we're up to speed. And then in September, we still have our planning meeting, but we go from there. So, that was the thought process. We do have some dates in there. Of course, right fifteen minutes after Dr. Gallo sent this out, I do have a conflict on the thirteenth. I don't know if anyone else does.
Does it, is it any easier for people? I mean, I know my summer schedule's a little bit in flux. To meet, could we do this in one meeting per month and just have a, you know, a longer meeting?
We could, you know what we could do is we could actually start it that way, drive with one longer meeting, and if for some reason it goes too long, we can. One thing, Carol, I was trying to do, my thought process was, we've had those very good Saturday meetings, but they tend to stretch, and I think sometimes they go too long. I was really thinking about having Dr. Gallo cover whatever she could in a ninety-minute period. And when that ninety-minute period was over, we ended it, and then that's where she picked it up. That's why I was using two of the meetings. But if you want to start with one meeting and we just put a cap on it at two hours, something like that, or, you know, two and a half, we can go from there. Yeah.
What are we talking about here?
So, there's, well, it, I do have the list here.
What do you two have that we don't have?
It's something that we're working on a draft to get to you.
You're working on?
We do have a draft.
Right.
Put together to summarize the meetings that we had, that we will get to you.
And with graduation, things got delayed, but, so...
Okay, so you two have it, but we don't have it?
No.
No, no, no. So, actually, Dr. Gallo, do you want to start with some of the big picture items? So, we were just talking about things that Dr. Gallo had told us about, that we'd like to, for everyone to be all on the same page, or not on the same page, but just be aware of. Obviously, full-day kindergarten, her thoughts on technology, things about long-range planning with the health and fitness, the ten-year master plan review is up, do we need a new one of that? So, some of those are the things that were, were continued thoughts by Dr. Gallo. See, like you want that?
One thing that we were thinking about was, A, we wanted to use the summer, and we
thought also, we were thinking about, again, maybe rolling out in shorter spans of time instead of doing it all in one planning meeting. And last time, remember, Ray, I think we actually ended meeting in October, was it? Yeah, you know, so we end up losing the summer, and so...
November fifteenth, one, one year it was October, for sure.
And so, and some of the thing is also, when we have this, maybe some of these things could also then be pushed down to the subcommittee level. So, that was some of the thought.
So, so, I have another question. So, part of the reason why we decided to start having these planning meetings three years ago, when Carol was the Chair, was it would give us an opportunity to kind of have frank discussion when we wouldn't otherwise be able to do that. Also, part of the process was discussing budget and our approach to it for the coming year and that we would not have sufficient information available prior to really September in order to have a good discussion. And, you know, I know we already talked about wanting to move forward with kind of a revisit of a ten-year master plan to some extent, and out of that became the idea to hire this new facilities person. So, I, I mean, I guess...
I think, can I answer your question?
Yes.
So, so Liza and, and Andy and I have met, we actually have met twice since, since the committee was reconstituted. And as, as part of that first meeting, we had a discussion. They asked, what do you see to be on our horizon over the next couple of years? Things that we need to be thinking about, some of which are mandated things, obviously, that need to be on our horizon, and some are things that perhaps the, the school committee would want to entertain. And I came up with a list and, of, of things, and some of them were in fact mandates, some were things that we have no control over, that we just have to do, and others were things that certainly I think need discussion. And they were things like looking at another kind of ten-year plan because our old one has expired and we're going to need new information, whether that would be something we do now or in another year. We've talked several years now about an SOI for windows for Foster or Columbus River or both. That's on our horizon for discussion. So, it was a list of things like that, looking forward to full-day kindergarten, you know, evaluating it and then looking forward to how we're going to fund that. And so, there were a list of, goes up to I or J, something like that. And they were just things in a discussion. And that then Andy's thought was that we, we run out of time at that planning meeting, and that's true. We don't, we have, you know, we say four hours and a hard stop and it, we run out of time. So, the idea was that if we could begin putting some of those things out on the table as things to think about so that when we have the, the, the planning meeting, because we don't want to do away with that, we would have a basis for having people at least some prior thinking about priorities. We still need the planning meeting. We do need to be ready for the next budget season. You know, we do need to be ready particularly for thinking about the capital projects and, and all of that. So, that's how it, it came up. And, and Andy felt very strongly that you, as a school committee, ought to get information about those meetings that we had, and that is in process. So, Andy prepared a draft, and I looked at the draft, came up with some ideas for formatting it, and that is now in Andy's hands, but only as of yesterday. And, so you will get copies of what are notes, not minutes, just not intended to be minutes, but notes of those meetings.
Yeah, Ray, if I can add, it's the only intent of provide more information to the committees that only have the same kind of format, planning meetings, that everyone's more informed, and we can maybe publish more at the September time meetings, especially, you know, we have two new members, so it gives them some more information, and even fresher information. One of the things we talked about was the parks versus MCAS, that to even start thinking that if the state decides to do park, you know, that's going to be, hopefully they don't, but, you know, if they do, what do we have to start thinking about? And if we talked about that at one of the summer meetings, we'd have more time to get information than holding it to the September, so...
And you'll notice that when you get the notes, there are question marks after some things, because there's no, there are no decisions. These were things that came out of my head, and not prior planning, it wasn't as if we decided we were going to talk about these. These are things that I think are at least are on the discussion agenda. Certainly, I was concerned initially about the idea of having notes that would, might suggest to people that decisions had already been made and priorities have been set, nothing further from the truth. And so, when you get the notes, you'll see there are question marks after a lot of those things. SOI, question mark. The 10-year master plan, or new master plan, or review plan, or whatever you want to call it, question mark. And on the other hand, there are things like response to MCAS park decisions, we've got to do something about. We may not like what we come to, but we have to do something about.
Does it take any sense while we're looking at these days, looking at that planning meeting date?
Yes, and that's what the agenda says.
I mean, so Labor Day's late this year.
Which may be a good thing, or not. Last year, we started looking at this time of year, and couldn't come to consensus.
Some of us are going to have kids going to college, so that's going to throw a...
That's the thing. So, the summer, are people around for July 20th and 27th, or at least to schedule one of those two? Does anyone have any objections to July 20th or 27th?
Either of those, the twen, do you?
Either one's fine.
I'd rather do the 20th, myself. I don't know if anybody else has any.
Okay. So, why don't we schedule July 20th, right now? And then... What time? I was going to start, because the summer, it's seven o'clock, and I'd like to make it more of a hard stop at night, or we'll keep it fluid. Yeah, seven o'clock, July 20th, at 7:00 PM. Do we schedule the 27th then, or we keep it fluid, Dr. Gallo?
Up to the committee.
Do you guys want to?
I don't want to, I wouldn't want to go then the following week, myself.
So, the idea, I think, was you'd like to see meetings be an hour and a half, we think we all could agree on that one, and our first effort was a failure tonight, but we'll do better. But anyway, the summer meetings typically are a shorter agenda, so if we start at seven and think about, can we do two, one and a half-hour meetings in one night, or do we want two one-and-a-half-hour meetings in two separate nights, it would seem to be with them.
So, why don't we then plan for the one night on July 20th? Okay.
And try to do both?
Good, yep, crank it up, good. Now, the August date, people have kids going back to school, the 24th usually seems like, Carol, are you...
We would usually schedule it, but it can be flexible.
You guys want to go the 17th or the 24th?
Be the 17th.
Or you have conflicts in August?
Labor Day is August 28th, so it doesn't matter. Those days are both fine.
Anyone have preference either the 17th or 24th?
I'd go with the 17th, myself.
Ray?
I think those days are fine, but if we could start at 7:30 rather than seven.
Do you need us to start 7:30 on the 20th, also?
Of July?
Yes.
No.
Okay. So, August 17th, 15th at 7:30? Wonderful. August 17th. So, July 20th at 7:00 PM, and August 17th at 7:30 PM. And...
If it worked out better to have two meetings in July and then the one in August, because, I mean, I'm fine with, I'm fine with the concept, as long as, you know, we can be productive.
Why don't we try the 20th, see how it goes, and, you know, by then, I think also people will have their, a lot more of their things, summer schedule. Also, if people are around during the week, in theory, also depending on Dr. Gallo's schedule, we might be able to pop in for a Wednesday, or...
Well, and also, you're going to send the notes up, Ray.
Yes.
So, by our next meeting, we could, you know, once you see the notes, then, I don't know, if you have other ideas and things that you want to know about, I think we should add them to the list, and don't want to make it too long, but...
And again, a lot of this thing is just for Dr. Gallo to have an opportunity to really present. As you all know, because she has more knowledge than all of us in this field, there's so much detail that goes into everything, especially when you consider all the state mandates, so the background she provides and the things that she's, has to run, has to do with the School Committee and run the district, is quite insightful. All right, what about planning? Can we get into planning right now in September? Ray, what, we, football, is Sundays or Saturdays or both days?
Well, Saturday morning and Sunday afternoon.
Right.
Sunday morning, are the planning both ways on Saturday and on a Sunday this past year? Yeah, we've done both.
I was not going to recommend at night in September, because I feel the administration has a lot of open houses and stuff, and getting kids back into routine.
I mean, is that good for you, John, in terms of budget? I mean, is September, is that too early?
Homecoming's October.
Probably would be pretty early.
Well, it's not too early. Well, it's to talk, what we typically do at that meeting is come up with the big ideas, right? That will then guide our assumptions and our guidelines, our budget guidelines.
Yeah, so that would actually be a good time, you know, if we talk... And the big ideas and what direction we want to go to relative to budget. All right?
So, do you guys want to schedule eight to noon on Sunday, or eight to 11? What time? Would you guys want to schedule?
Four hours, and we always run out of time, maybe we'll need less time.
Probably not, but...
I doubt it also.
No one likes to start before 8:00 AM, correct?
No.
Okay. So, 9:13, 8:00 AM, we'll tentatively schedule it till noon, but hopefully we'll need less on September 13, 15. Good. All right?
That's amazing. One other thing isn't on here, but we've been trying to get set up, and is having Glenn Kuchar come to do a training, preferably sooner rather than later, and I've talked to him, very willing to do the training, likes to come to Hingham, as you all know, but we've been playing telephone tag in terms of getting, I've asked him to give us some dates that might be acceptable. And we've typically done that in an evening, maybe, maybe an early evening, could be, you know, five to eight and pizza or something like that, but let me get the list of dates from him, but that's hopefully on our June agenda some way.
Okay, that concludes item 6.4. 6.5's been well concluded. 6.6, "John, to hear a financial summary update as to the anticipated status of the fiscal year 15 operating budget as the end of 2014-15 fiscal year."
And that's in your packet for him tonight.
Looking at the budget for FY15 at this point, we're pretty much at zero. Right now, when I...
Zero will, at the end of the year.
Zero at the end of the year, but it's pretty close to zero now anyways. We, I mean, we have, you know, 99.69% of the budget expended, or 99.39% of the budget expended, and I'm forecasting, you know, about 60, 0.66% of the budget in forecasted items. The, so, you know, that comes actually over 100% of the budget, so for the most part, the entire budget is accounted for at this point. At the, come the end of the year, we don't have, we don't encumber payrolls such as paras, owlies, and bus drivers, and the, and then we also have subs too that don't get encumbered, so that's part of the 0.66. But in addition to that, too, there's a, there's a number of overlays in the forecast, and one of them has to do with the reserve fund transfer that we requested for the snow removal, that was $244,000. So, all these numbers presume that, that reserve fund transfer will be coming into us. Also, there's insurance settlements that we had, like the Plymouth River Insurance Settlement. We know that that's coming back into the budget, but the journal entries haven't posted yet, so, so there's a good number of overlays in the budget.
Those are things voted at town meeting, that then have to be posted to our account.
So, I don't want you to think that just 0.66% of our budget is what our payroll will be for the rest of the month, because it won't be. You know, there's, there's, those, those other settlements sort of coming back into the budget. So, we're, with the forecast, I'm sitting at, you know, somewhere between 20 and 50 negative, and then that could go to 20 positive, but I think that we can manage this budget to come into zero at the end of the year, and, you know, because what will happen is we have POs encumbered, so all those encumbrances, some of those POs will close, and they'll close, and they'll still have monies that are available on them. Sometimes, you know, it might be $1,000, sometimes maybe $500. Trouble is, the history has always said they close, but if they don't close, then we could potentially be in trouble, but if, if they didn't close like that, I think that what we could do is, we could defer some, some early start on some maintenance for the summer, or we could defer some other purchases, you know, such as a paper purchase or so, so that we can make sure that we land in budget. In any event, this year, I just do not see any large amounts going back to the town. I, I think that, you know, so there'll be nothing significant remaining at the end of this budget. I would suggest that if we had additional monies left over, you know, say the POs did close and we freed up more money, that we could do a couple of things. One is, the capital deferred, the expansion of the kitchen at the high school, which I think we'll need to expand to accommodate the class size that's going in there, so we'd end up having three lines at the high school instead of two. You know, I've got some prices on that to the tune of about $60,000, initially on the budget, there was about 12, because we're just going to put a hole in the wall, but the more study we do, the more we figure out how the thing should really go, so that project would be about $60,000. We could encumber some funds to contribute towards that construction, and hopefully end up taking the rest out of the food service account, which is actually having a very good year. Or we could preserve the money into the field or building revolving to cover the emergency that ultimately will occur next year, that we just don't know what it is yet. You know, you, we don't know what the emergency's at. This year, we had the boiler at the high school for $28,000. I mean, those types of things will happen, you just can't say what, when, how they will happen. So, those are just some ideas, and as we get more into the rest of this year, you know, then the 15th, I can report out again, you know, how, how we're doing. But basically, if you, I've itemized detailed where I'm at now, and these numbers, and, you know, can't walk into these numbers, because they will change between now and the end of the year, because things haven't posted, there's a number of overlays in here, and, you know, it's really not a fine science at this point in the year, when you're out trying to get all the invoices in from vendors, make sure, understand what POs need to stay open and what POs need to close, because we generate over 7,000 POs a year. That's a, quite a task. But salary accounts, we're showing negative about $61,000, and a lot of that has to do with, and that's really difficult to show too this year, because the allowance account was all sitting in regular education. We've had the, we've saved on tuitions, but we've had to hire some additional paras, special education paras, and personnel, and then also transportation, and we have some additional contractual services in special education as well, too. When we save these people and keep them within their schools, we incur some additional costs. So, personnel's running a little bit negative, about $61,000 at this point. Utilities and gasoline is a result of the winter. We, you know, this was an extreme winter, when we had those 35 or 40 days of the very, very cold weather. Energy bills were up, while prices came down, we really didn't benefit, our benefit was minimal for those, because basically, we had contracted rates set during that time that they were decreasing, similar to next year. I mean, we know we had some of those decrease in rates that we've locked in, so we are seeing some savings in '16, but for this year, we really didn't see much savings from price, so we see a little negative in usage because of the extra cold. The special education out of district tuitions and the transportation and special services, there was a large, a fairly large tuition variance of about $300,000, and that's offset really by the additional need for contracted services and also contracted transportation. And then also, we already talked about the personnel above, so, but we're still showing a positive there in special education of about $134,000. Contracts, this is the area where all of the sort of overlays are sitting, so all of the snow charges are hitting in there. And when you think about the snow charges, our expenses for the snow in this severe weather are well over $400,000 or even more, you know, we're still discovering things that have been damaged, and basically trying to hit that same account, so we're showing right now negative $87,000, $88,000 in that account, and that presumes that all of the flow of money that we get, the reserve transfer comes back in, because really, it's like $500,000 now, but, you know, we're supposed to get $109,000 for Plymouth River and $244,000 for the reserve on transfer, and that will bring that account down to that negative balance of $87,000. Now, and then also, I guess, I could, the MEMA FEMA, we have a MEMA FEMA recovery, so all of these expenses, and I'm talking about like that $400,000 or $500,000, whatever we really have incurred, we'll file for, get that back in MEMA, but that's not coming back into the school budget, that will stay with the town. So, we won't ever see that, so we're really, really looking at today's, where are we with the state of this '15 budget? The, in addition, so we're getting small monies back, when you think about it, we're getting the $109,000 for PRS and $244,000 for the reserve fund transfer, provided that the selectmen and the IDCON vote for us to get that money back, or else we're going to be way over. The, we, things like the PRS snow removal, insurance only covered half of that, our budget absorbed the other half. We have all the deductibles that were, occurred because of the, you know, at least five insurance claims, you know, $5,000 apiece. We also have the extra overtime that our people worked, none of that was included in the reserve fund transfer, and the reserve fund transfer, all that we included was, this is the contractors that remove the snow from our roofs, and not Plymouth River, just all, this is the amount that we think we need for reserve fund transfer, and we'll manage our budget to try to take care of all the rest of the expenses. So, basically, contracts, you know, you're seeing that negative there, and that has to do with, you know, decent management beyond, you know, what we could do. And then the other variances of a positive $16,000 for tax, for other, it includes stuff like supplies, tax, and copier maintenance, and as you know, and copiers typically during the year will enter into a copier lease, and that will save us some maintenance dollars, so we get a little bit of an offset there. And for capital, we haven't fully expended all capital, but I do expect that capital will come in at zero, we'll have, we've expended more for floors and vehicles than we had anticipated, but that will be offset by some underspending in equipment. that will be offset by some underspending in, in equipment and lighting projects.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for taking over the side of your hand. Real quickly, he provided us this sheet, so take this, read through it. If you have any detailed questions, please send him a note, and then he's gonna give us, you know, follow up with a question and answer right there, after you have time for review.
Yes, just because we have two advisory committee members in the, the audience who would have Dick Lenders in this item, really wanna emphasize what John said about, about the snow removal costs. You all know that the town voted for about one-point-six million dollars at town meeting to cover costs. Of that six point, uh, one-point-six million dollars, two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand is what we put in it. And I know that at one point, there was, there was some discussion, informal discussion, I would say, about the fact that, well, as the year closes out, maybe the school budget could absorb some of those costs. And what I wanna emphasize is that we have. So we have really absorbed, as, as John said, the deductibles, all of our own overtime and half of the Plymouth River roof cost. And, and that's part of the reason we are where we are with such a close budget. So, so we already have taken some responsibility for some of those extraordinary costs this year. And, and the, and so the two-forty-four represents the rest of the snow removal from the roofs. And given that we're the biggest department and with the most property and so on, you know, I think that's not an extraordinary amount of money. We do wanna know when, do, do you folks know when your vote will be?
Well, this, there are, at the beginning of this, I think it was not, uh...
I think the selectmen vote first, if that, that's true.
Yes. And our meeting, um, it begins at the end of the year, like it's, uh, twenty-nine, twenty...
Okay. All right, so we need to monitor both the, the board of the selectmen meeting and the AdCom meeting.
I think it's the first day, so we will be able to talk to them.
Thank you.
Item six point seven, to receive a position statement proposed by Liza O'Reilly for presentation at the June tenth hearing on the MCAS versus Park debate and take action as appropriate. Liza.
Good. Um, so I, in your packet, you received the position statement that I wrote. And I did this because as follow-up, when we voted last year about whether Hingham should go with MCAS or Park this current school year, as towns were opted to test Park. And I had gotten some information with Dr. Gallo and Ellen Keenan. We all supported us staying with MCAS. So I've been following the issue. And the Board of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is hosting five public forums to get feedback from anyone in the community, teachers, school committee members, the public, about what they think about the chance of the Board changing from MCAS to Park. And so there was an event, April twenty-eighth in Pittsburgh, May eighteenth at Bunker Hill Community College in Boston, and then there's one June tenth at Bridgewater State that is planning to go to. And then there'll be two more, June twenty-second in Lynn and July seventh in Springfield. And so I have never testified at one of these public forums, and I feel pretty passionately about this issue. And so I wanted to go and attend. And I've been working on this with Dot and Ellen to make sure that my facts are correct and that also am supportive of their views on this issue as well. So I'm not gonna read this statement, but just to give you some thought on how I approached it, the beginning of it, I noted the goals and the missions of what the Board has on their, as their missions and goals. And I looked at that because I was trying to think of, where's this all starting from? And what are we trying to accomplish of these assessments and the tests? And so one of their goals for their mission is to strengthen the curriculum instruction and assessment. So if we're, are we really strengthening the assessment by switching to Park so quickly was what was on my mind? And is the Board accomplishing one of their goals by doing this? And then I, I thought about, okay, you know, where did MCAS come from? And thought about the, in nineteen ninety-three, there was the Education Reform Act, and that's when, you know, the legislature voted on that. And at that time, there was interest in having an assessment. So then I had to ask myself, okay, instead of simply making the choice of MCAS versus Park, I'm, I'm saying, consider taking action on what type of assessment is in the best interest of our students. And, and I'm not just making the choice between the two tests, but what do we really want for these kids? And, and is Park really the best we can do? And so then I laid out, you know, in Hingham, we elected to stay with MCAS this year, and we made this decision because it's in the best interest of our students and our teachers. And this part I'll read. "Our students come to us at five years old to begin their journey to adulthood at eighteen. They learn how to think for themselves, communicate well, interact with their peers, learn about their community, nation, and world, and explore what they want to be when they grow up. In some cases, they are coming to school to be fed, nurtured, and feel safe. Our mission is to deliver the opportunity for each child to fulfill his or her full potential each and every year. We did not want our students to experience a different still-in-development assessment that created additional test stress. We did not want to impose an additional burden and stress on our teachers. In the past five years, they have adapted to new standards, adjusted curriculums, learned new material, created district-determined measures, student learning goals, and professional practices, collected evidence, and fulfilled bullying training, ELL licensing, fingerprinting, and other state mandates. Again, we did not want our teachers to experience a different still-in-development assessment and create additional test stress." So that's why Hingham decided, you know, let's stay with MCAS one more year. So then, my recommendation in this is, I believe that before voting a new test, we have a right to insist that the Commonwealth and the Department of Education, of, I'm gonna say it wrong, early and secondary education provides us validation that the new assessments delivers. And I list ten different things. Fewer school days required to take the test, reduced staff time and effort to administer the test, less practice time for students to learn how to execute the test, options for how students can take the test, paper or electronic, provides clear opportunities for students with differentiated learning needs, results that are meaningful when compared to previous assessment results, seamless technology execution, test results that have been fully analyzed as to their validity and reliability for measuring what students have learned, school districts and teachers will no longer believe that it is necessary to teach to the test when educating students, and Massachusetts students who are energetic, creative, and motivated to learn." So, there's a little bit more. But then, so that's what I wrote. I also then, Cynthia prepared this week, she was looking at, we got some more information that the Park test people had reduced the number of hours they were proposing for the test. And she created a wonderful chart, which answered one of my questions, is, well, oh.
It looks correct, except for the long conversation, it has two sessions, forty-five minutes.
That was best revised.
Oh, okay. I didn't say the revised. Yeah, okay. But I do wanna remind everybody that although that's what the tests are allocated and designed for, the tests are untimed. MCAS tests are untimed.
So...
So my answer to Cynthia's question about what are the times was to tell her what the official DOD, Department of Elementary and Secondary, had designed the test and what time is allocated for the test. But all of the MCAS tests are untimed.
Which means individual students may stay through the end of the day, if that's...
So even though we might schedule a certain amount of time for a test, any student who needs more time has to be given that time. And Paula can tell you that there are kids actually, like particularly on the comp, who work on it all day long.
But that would be the same for Park, because Park is...
No, Park is timed.
It's timed.
An extended time is available, but not an unlimited time.
Okay, but you, you wouldn't have to offer...
Yes, but, but it's capped.
It's like half as much, so if the test was an hour, you'd have to allocate an hour and a half for the kids to take it, where MCAS is completely untimed.
And what that means, particularly at the high school, because high school courses are not grade level specific, is that it's the interruptedness of the test, not because of the test itself, but because of the expanded periods of time when some kids are out of many classes, and kind of renders you into a, you know, a mode of not being able to get a lot done in the testing period.
Okay, so what Cynthia prepared was a chart of comparing the Park allocated time to the MCAS allocated time. And at least for the MCAS allocated time, it's about half of the, the time compared to the Park, even that, you know, there's time limits. But personally, I'd like to see even the MCAS time reduced. So, but after seeing her chart, that would be the one thing I would consider possibly adding to what I had written. But I wanted to share with all of you that I wanted to do this personally, and if I could have your endorsement, support, because we had already voted previously to not go ahead with the Park testing for many of these same reasons, I would appreciate it, and I think it would show some strength from Hingham of, that's how we're considering these assessments. So that was why I was sharing it with all of you.
Discussion.
Personally, I have not made up my mind, so I would not want you to represent me personally as endorsing this, because I'm having an open mind, and I just feel like I'm waiting for more information for the Park testing that has happened this year or so.
I like the general idea of what you're trying to do. I'm not sure what you've written makes the case that you're trying to make as clearly as, as you could. And it's not just the edits that I have that I'm happy to give you before you turn it in and you can consider them or not for your own benefit. But just in, in general, I think you could, you could say in a different way, the point that you're trying to make, that don't leave it just to Park versus MCAS, but leave it to be, you know, kind of a broader approach to assessment in the Commonwealth that achieves X number of goals towards reaching your mission. So I, I get the idea you're trying to accomplish. I don't think this does that. The other thing is, I too haven't made up my mind on this issue. I wanna find out, one of the reasons why, you know, we voted to stick with MCAS too was, we had gone through, or were going through the trial, and we wanted to get the results of that. We haven't gotten the results of that yet. And I'm familiar with these types of events. They don't, they, they schedule them and they hold them to appease folks like us who feel strongly about issues like this that are very important. But the way that real change gets affected by Mitch Chester or somebody else who's, or the Board that's gonna make a decision on this, is, you know, we, we lobby our legislators to lean on them hard. And folks who have power, like Garrett Bradley and, and Bob Hedlund and others, that's how our voice gets heard, I think, more effectively. And I have some experience with that too, because I work with a number of former legislators and even a former governor. And we talk about stuff like this all the time, over coffee. I, I'm just, I, I don't know if this is, you know, certainly, I know you feel passionately about this, you spend a lot of time on this, you've read a lot about, I read that same article about the, the changes recently, and I've read a whole bunch of stuff over the last, you know, three years on this. I don't know if this is something that we wanna be kind of making a public statement about in this way, right now, as a committee.
No, that's, that's perfectly fair. What I, I'd like to throw it out, that maybe when we have the discussion, when Dot presents, presents us more information and we're, we're getting closer, that we think about, what do we wanna say to our legislators? Because, oh, Alex, oh.
Well, I was gonna wait for your discussion to end, because I have something to say. I was gonna have, rather, a related to your speaker, if I may, if I may.
Sure.
You've been patient for four hours, Alex.
I'm impressed that you stayed to hear this.
Good evening. My name is Alex Porter. I'm the HEA president and a French teacher at the high school. I actually wanted to bring it to people's attention, to the general public's attention, a bill that is currently making its way through the legislature, H three-four-oh, which is an act relative to a moratorium on high-stakes testing and Park. The purpose of this bill, if I could just take a few moments to read the purpose, as well as what this bill does, as well as talk about the week of action that both the MTA and HEA are planning for next week, and I will also mention some of the legislatures who are in fact sponsors or co-sponsors of this bill. So the purpose of this bill, educators, parents, and students across the Commonwealth are growing increasingly concerned about high-stakes testing and are calling for the reexamination of how the current standardized assessment, MCAS, is being used. In addition, there is also concern about the test and test preparation of Partnership for Assessment in Readiness and College and Careers, PARK, most importantly, the time it takes away from teaching. Many important decisions about districts, schools, educators, and students are based on these test scores. Consequently, districts have increased the number, excuse me, have increased the amount of time used in test preparation throughout the course of the year, but are most prevalent in the weeks leading up to the testing dates. This has been done at the expense of other learning in other important areas such as art, music, gym, and health education, and I personally would add foreign language. What this bill does, H three-four-oh, is twofold. It places a three-year moratorium on the implementation of PARK, and it also removes the high-stakes nature of MCAS for three years by eliminating the tenth-grade graduation requirement, the use of MCAS scores in evaluation, in evaluating educators, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's use of MCAS scores for assessing schools and/or school districts. During the three-year moratorium, a task force of community stakeholders, parents, educators, union leaders, appropriate administration designees, and legislators will meet and examine the high-stakes use of MCAS in light of the paramount goal of the Ed Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three, which in part reads, "To provide a public education system of sufficient quality to extend to all children, including a limited English proficient student, and also including a school-aged child with a disability, the opportunity to reach their full potential and to lead lives as participants in the political, social, and economic life of the Commonwealth." The task force will meet to examine the standardized assessments that are currently used in the classroom. They will then evaluate the use of standardized assessments, the implementation of the educator evaluation framework, and the use of data, student data on standardized tests for the purpose of evaluating students, educators, schools, and districts in order to determine if the system of assessments are providing a quality public education system. In addition, the task force will consider the following questions. What are the time and cost implications of mandating testing on federal, state, and district resources? What impact does mandated testing have on effective teaching and learning in the classroom? And what mechanisms are available other than standardized assessments to measure student, teacher, school, and district progress towards achieving a quality public education? The task force will submit their findings to the clerks of the House of Representatives and the Senate of the Massachusetts Legislature no later than eighteen months after the term. Legislature no later than 18 months after the task force organizes. I can say that, as I said, the MTA and the HEA are organizing a week of action next week, starting with handing out of flyers and stickers, "Less testing, more learning" is their theme. I was delighted to see a similar bumper sticker out on the bulletin board just outside. Tuesday is our Contact Your Legislator Day, in which we are inviting parents, teachers, educators, administrators, school committee members to contact, contact their legislator to support the passage of H340. Wednesday, I will be at that hearing as well. BESI or the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education will be having their public forum hearing on PARK. On Thursday, the Education Committee will be having its hearing on H340, and on Friday is Union Color Day, so it'll be a sea of red in Redding, oh, excuse me, Hingham and Redding as well, sorry. I will say that as far as local names are concerned, Representatives James Cantwell, Josh Cutler, and James Murphy, as well as Senator Bob Hedlund, have signed on as cosponsors. So I hope that we can svi, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm very tired. I hope we can rely on kind of a universal support of the passage of this bill and just put a three week, excuse me, a three-year pause on what has become testing madness. Thank you very much.
That may be a fun place to go. And one related note, three parents, including Cynthia, let me know today that there was petition by some preschool parents, is that where it originated? I don't think it's gone out to everybody, but some people have received it, and that petition asks for parents to sign on, perhaps to go to this meeting. I'm not sure if that's the, the idea or not, but to support this notion of, hey, stop, take a pause, think about what you're doing. So the only problem with the petition is, it's inaccurate in a, in a very important way to us, because it, it lists the tests that they would like to see eliminated or reconsidered, and included in that is the DIBELS. Now, the DIBELS is a local assessment, takes a very short period of time, it's for young kids, it's our assessment, it's not a summative test to measure how teachers teach or how kids perform, it's a diagnostic assessment that we use. It's really important. That's how we individualize our literacy instruction, and so it's unfortunate that the petition originators didn't check on that, because really, it isn't in that group of mandated tests, so I hope that message can get communicated back.
Do you have an opinion on that, Eleanor, Dr. Gallow?
Well, you know, for, for me, it's all about, there is too much testing, and I think we can do a much better job. My concern with the pace at which they've been moving, particularly with PARK, has always been about the test being somewhat underdeveloped. Yes, we've had some pilots, but we haven't analyzed them. Yes, we've had opportunity to practice the, the technology piece of it, but there's a lot more that needs to be done there. I just got an email the other day from Joey Andrews that had sad stories from other communities who tried to sign their kids in to take the test. Kids are already stressed and nervous, and they couldn't even sign them on, so those stories still abound. And ultimately, the whole point of, is this test, and no one, to my knowledge, has answered this, is this Park test that's being proposed? We could ask the same question about MCAS. Is it really doing, and it gets back to your point, Liza, about, you know, what is their goal? Is it really doing what we want it to do? And we seem to stop at the point of creating a test and giving the test and analyzing the results to see how teachers performed, and I put that first for a reason, how teachers performed and how students performed, but we never look at, is it doing what it is we want to do, which is to find out how kids are really progressing? And that's, that's been my major concern all along. You know, we, we voted for the MCAS this year, you did, and I was very happy about that. We had a three-year technology plan just to get ready, and we needed the one more year to do that. That was one of the reasons, and then the overload on, on everybody with all the other mandates was another big reason, but underlying it all, my personal feeling is way too much testing and real questions about whether the testing is doing what people have said they wanted it to do.
So based on that, would you support Liza, or you have no opinion?
I, I surely support Liza's statement.
So from, from, you don't, from your point of view, being the head of our educational system, you have no problem with her speaking on behalf of the Hingham School Committee?
Well, I have no problem with her speaking as an individual, it's up to the committee whether.
And I would agree, I support her sentiments, and that she has every right to speak on behalf of herself if the whole school committee doesn't agree, and, and at this point, this is a changing, you know, I think we do need to wait until we have more information. It's a changing, the PARK, every, every month, there's a new revision of, you know, first we were going to have performance-based assessment in March, and end of the year, and then the latest thing, I just gave you a copy of, is no, we're not going to do that anymore, we're going to do end of the year testing, and so, you know, I, I think it's an ever-changing assessment, and I personally feel that we do a wonderful job here in Hingham with our own teachers and our own district assessments to make sure that our kids are career and college ready.
And really, what is the rush? Some of the rush seems to be that federal funds that were used to create the tests had some kind of expectations with the time limits, and that has rushed everything in a way that to me is, is wrong.
And I also support what Dot said about the DIBELS, is the DIBELS as part is a formative assessment, it's not high stakes, it's used as an integral part of our response to intervention, targeted reading program, which is, in my mind, one of the major reasons why our kids do so well in reading. You know, so it's unfortunate that was lumped together, because I don't think it belongs with the list.
Anybody else have any comments?
Okay, well, I will, that was an individual, but I want to do all the things that I was doing, and then I hope we can continue the topic, and obviously, we have parents who are interested too, so we'll report back.
And then also, if you can incorporate?
Yes, thank you.
And if you want to incorporate some of Alex's comments about H340?
I made a note, and I'll find you in Bridgewater.
Okay, so item six point eight, nine, and 10, we have a retirement, a resignation, a leave of absence. Thank you very much, all the hard work of those people. Did you have anything to note on those, Dr. Gallow?
No, we're under three categories, so we hope that the new visual of the agenda in not listing every single individual, so, who is, will we, at least, make us hopeful that the agenda is not as long as it is.
Now, we do have one 48-hour item. Do you want to speak, or Margaret, or how do you want to do this?
Margaret's here.
Margaret's. So she, Margaret, as your reward for staying until 11:11, you get to speak again.
As you all know, the Girls and Boys Rowing Team were, won the state championship very recently, and they, the girls' team has had very, very strong races, very strong season, and petitioned to go to the Nationals, and what, and it was accepted. The Nationals will be held June 10th through 12th, I believe, excuse me, or, they're coming back on the 14th, a Sunday night, in Sarasota, Florida. They have a budget of, they've, for their, for about $14,000, and... Oh, you do, okay. So, they had asked, you know, would the school be interested in giving some sort of a donation to help offset their costs? They have, have, you know, are also hoping, asking other groups too. I, I don't, I remember a couple of years ago, they went, and I, for some reason, I felt that there was, I don't know, it didn't make a policy, but perhaps a statement or donation regarding of this.
I remember specifically, and I went back and looked at the notes. So, it was this meeting a year ago, on June 2nd.
Okay.
They had asked you, and you agreed to give them $1,000 out of the athletic budget, and then we discussed it here, and we agreed to give them $2,800 over that, so a total of $3,800 from our budget, but we did express a concern about setting a precedent with respect to that group and not doing it perhaps for other groups.
Right.
But at the same time, I think we mentioned that it was, you know, an exciting opportunity to go to Nationals. Not every group does get that opportunity. We wouldn't, we weren't offering to pay for the whole thing, and I think there was a great deal of discussion about how much should it be that kind of represents, you know, a support of the effort and the recognition, but not just writing a check for the whole thing, because that would set a bad precedent. So, and again, last year, I think the cost was about $14,000 for the whole thing, and so based on that, you gave them $1,000 out of the athletic budget, we gave them $2,800.
So, the only difference this year is we have, we're in the red, right, at this point in time?
Much tighter.
Right. Last year, I think we had a little bit more flexibility.
And also, the way, I think John ultimately worked it last year, just because giving a donation out of the budget isn't quite the way we can do things, but we could identify a particular area of cost there, such as the transport of the boats, or whatever it might be, that could be something that we could fund, so that it wasn't so much as a fixed, a fixed number donation. So that was the way it was managed last year, and they say on this, I also received just before we went, came into this meeting, the field trip form that they are submitting, and remember, that's another point, that these are school days this year, because of the fact we get out on the 23rd, and, and this would be the 10th to 14th, but...
But not for the seniors?
Not for the seniors. I don't know the makeup of the team. There are 10 girls who would be going, but, but in any event, what they have here is the estimated cost per student from the field trip form, is it's at $6.55 so far. I know they've already done a little fundraising, haven't had a big opportunity. They had a car wash on Saturday on Main Street, I went by that.
So, do you happen to know we've given some stipends for, is it for National History Day, or?
Well, our practice used to be for National History Day, in the years when we went every year, was that we did pay for the chaperones. These are middle school-aged kids, we had to have a fair number of chaperones that went, and we paid for their travel and hotel expenses that typically was to Washington DC. This is to Sarasota, Florida, so we did pay for that. We are actually funding the two students and two adults tomorrow who will go to Washington for the Green Ribbon Award, so we're funding that. Actually, we are funding it since $1,500, and Paula's Activity Fund will fund 500 of it. So we do have a history. I think the difference here, and I'm not suggesting that we not contribute, but the difference here is, it's a big cost, it's far away, it's a larger number of people for a longer period of time, and the transport of the, I say boat, but that's probably a better word, that they will.
Is that an accurate translation? Number for the boat, it says $3.50 in gas each direction and $300 rental, so is it, is it $1,000, or is it $6.50?
This figure just came to us yesterday from them, so.
It's actually a firm, they, they, they have interactive rowing, I think, takes a trailer down there, so they, they, they pay for that.
So they probably have lots of kids in the row?
I just got the binder for them today.
Yeah, but you still don't tip $15 a night for a row?
Oh, talking about the bead tip, yeah, I wasn't even looking at that.
Well, the nice thing about this budget is it is totally inclusive, because they have food, they have tips, they have everything in there.
It says also five nights in a hotel. Because it says up here...
If we're giving...
But is there somebody going with the boat, that they have to put them up on route for one night?
Well, it says the 12th, 12th, so I was thinking the 12th, 13th, 14th. Right, they've got five days of food, five nights in a hotel, so they must be going down ahead of time for practice or something?
Sure.
Maybe the 12th or the 14th is just the actual...
The date you're leaving is 6:10 AM, 6:00 AM, and returning on 6:14 at 11:00 PM.
So it's the 10th?
So it'll be 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th.
11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, five.
I mean, if we're giving $1,500 to the Green Ribbon Team this year, I mean, would we, you know, could we swing $1,500 to put towards these expenses, for, just for parity's sake, in this particular year? Or are, are people worried about it being an ongoing precedent?
Consistent.
It would have to come out of the athletic revolver.
Well, I mean, it was easier last year when, you know, we, we were not quite as tight, and there was a huge surplus at the end of the year for a number of reasons.
We absolutely can't afford $2,800.
Well, the request is, the request is...
For anything.
1,500 to 2,000. I think you'd like to see 1,500 to 2,000, so.
I don't...
Athletic revolver.
Unless the budget closes out for that, then what we're thinking at this moment, but that would be the bailout place, would be athletic revolver.
Do you have any other teams that are traveling for championships this year?
MIAA rules doesn't allow any of, any of our teams to go to Nationals, and, so if any of our students go to a National, they do it on their own, but rowing is not governed by MIAA.
Anybody want to make a motion with a dollar amount to open up discussion and close out the meeting?
I would move that we approve 1,500 to be funded through the athletic revolving account. Do you think we could?
We can do the, yeah, through the athletic revolving account, we could do that.
I guess I would like to, if...
Do you have a second first? Because I have a motion.
I might want to amend his motion. I'm concerned about the precedent. Every year, I mean, this could continue, they're, they're a great team, very successful. I mean, how do we, going forward, how do we treat this? Are we paying every year, making a donation to this? So, I don't know. I mean, Liza raised a point about, do we say this is the last year we're doing it? I don't know.
I mean, I, I don't disagree, but at the same point, I know that this is a sport that we don't really fund that much at all. I think it's a, a small amount for coaching. Other than that, it's completely...
We fund transportation.
Transportation and, and coaching.
And insurance.
Transportation.
So, was 5,000?
Only because it's the highest number of kids participating, so I don't think...
Which is fine, you can look at the track or whatever.
Would you put a coaching thing in and use it for transportation, right? What's it like, $5,600 bucks or something?
Yeah, above $5,600.
Above $5,600.
Total, or then also transportation total?
No, that's it.
No, we have some money that goes towards transportation.
Oh, do you pay for a coach too, or I thought you put the...
No, no, it's just, it goes towards their transportation.
Okay, it's just embedded, it's just embedded.
A number of buses when they go somewhere.
Yeah.
So is it 10,000, 15,000 total probably? 10,000 in transportation?
Seven, eight.
So with the 5,000 for the coaching, so 15,000 approximately?
No, I would have said seven or eight thousand total.
Okay, so transportation is like 3,000?
That's all she pays?
That's what we...
Right. We don't pay for a coach, we just put, we budget a coach and we use it for transportation.
Gotcha. So 8,000, so that's a lot lower.
And then there's extra in there, in addition to the coach, but just sort of melding into other transportation.
And they don't pay into the athletic fee, they pay a much larger fee from that, but it goes to the association.
Right.
True, the money that's in the revolving, the athletic revolving, that's just part of our budget that's set aside.
The athletic revolving comes from fees that students pay, um, to play sports. The families pay to, uh, to play sports, and then also the, uh, the gate receipts that we may receive from basketball or from football games, or any games that, um, we get a fee for.
So, none of the, that money comes from anything from crew then?
No, crew doesn't, right, they, they just go all to the HH, uh, S R S A. High school rowing.
They may pay more than six, something.
Yeah, I think it's three seventy-five every time, six hundred a term.
Six hundred a season.
Yeah.
Or it was last year, six hundred a season.
So, that's a very large amount of money.
So, they, you're right, they don't contribute to the athletic revolving account.
The interesting thing, Eileen, is that, it's, as Margaret was saying, our MIAA sports have a state championship. Since this is, is it governed or not governed by MIAA?
No.
It's not, no.
So, they have their own little other thing, and so that's where it's coming. So, I have a motion of fifteen hundred. Carol, did you want to amend it?
There's no second.
Or is there a second for fifteen? Cynthia will second it. Discussion. Dr. Ed?
I'd amend it to a thousand.
Dr. Ed would like to amend the motion to a thousand. Do I have a second on, on the thousand?
I'll second a thousand.
Thousand?
I would like to make a point, and I will, in full disclosure, let you all know that my daughter is on the crew team. She is not, however, on the team that would be going to Nationals. It is a varsity sport officially. Whether or not they pay into this athletic fund, you know, I know, I don't know why that decision was made.
Because we, we're able to support them in ways we support other, um.
Other teams, all of our other teams.
Oh, and I'm not arguing it.
No, but that, that's the reason there is a difference there.
I just don't think that because of that, I don't think that should affect the amount of money that we decide to give them in support of what was an extremely huge achievement. And going forward, you know, that's fine. If we give them, you know, any amount of money this year, and then say, this is not a guarantee, I'm completely fine with that. But I don't think the fact that they don't pay in, or, you know, it's a, it's a huge number of kids that participate, and they work their tails off, as every athlete does. So, they shouldn't be considered any differently than any other varsity team.
I, I agree. I think that's a great point. I think that, uh, you know, this is a program which has been built and is now known nationally because we go to these competitions, and we do so well. And to win state championship after state championship, they bring new people in, and they win a state championship with them. And that speaks to the people running the program and the support. I have a lot of friends whose kids are in the program. And I talk to them all the time, and they tell me how great the program is. And I talked to Doug McCaig, and, you know, whether you drink his Kool-Aid or not, he runs a great program. It's undeniable. And I think this is a tremendous honor, and I think it also reflects really well on our school and our town. So, I, I think we should support it to the extent we think we can.
Right, so we have two motions and two seconds.
So, well, yeah, so, we're, we're in discussion.
So, vote on the amended motion.
Yep, vote on the amended motion. So, all in favor of?
Let's, let's have, I'd like to just make a point. I, I, I think a thousand dollars is a lot of money. And I think it's a, I think it's a beneficial, generous, uh, contribution to the, to the rowing team. I, I, I don't feel that a thousand dollars is anything to sneer at. It's a lot of money. We had a conversation here from Dr. Gallo and John about budget, the potential, if not the factual budget shortfall. I think a thousand dollars is, is, is a, is a, is a good faith, uh, uh, donation.
Does anybody else wanna say anything? Otherwise, we'll do it. So, all those in favor of voting for the thousand-dollar amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So, four. All those opposed, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, it was four, three for a thousand-dollar amendment. And the four people voting in favor of the, of the thousand dollars was Dr. Ed Schreier, Carol Falvey, Liza O'Reilly, and Eileen Callen. Those opposed was. Correct. Okay.
And that dispenses for the other motion.
Right, so, um, so we're gonna give them a thousand dollars.
Good luck.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, we're adjourned at.
All those in favor.
All those in favor, aye?